The Common Council meeting of Tuesday, June twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Conklin.
President.
Curry.
Here.
Evers.
Here.
Figaroa Cole.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Furman.
Present.
Halverson.
Present.
Harrington McKinney.
Allison.
Heck.
Here.
Miazze.
Present.
Paulson is excused. Fair.
Here.
Tischler.
Here.
Vervier.
Here.
Vidaver.
Present.
Wajalia.
Here.
Abbas.
He's here. He's just rejoining as a panelist. Should be in any second.
Abbas, are you in? All right, I'll come back. Benford.
Present.
Bennett is excused. And Alder Carter.
Present.
And then Alder Abbas, are you there yet?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can, yes. Madam Mayor, we have form.
Thank you. Can we have the meeting instructions, please?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a vote call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. City staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the council may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the Common Council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I'll just remind us that we are here to do the business of the city of Madison. I'd ask people to be respectful in doing so and that all present registrants, staff, and members alike refrain from using profanity. I will try and continue to talk us through the mechanics of our agenda since we still have a few new faces with us and since some staff have admitted to me that it's helpful for them as well. And so I will do my best to orient us. Our first item tonight is a presentation of poetry. And to introduce that, I am going to ask our fantastic city poet laureate Angie Trudell-Vasquez to join us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to read the bio for Araceli Asparza. Araceli Asparza is a Latinx poet. Araceli's work has been published in Madison Magazine, Verse Wisconsin, and several anthologies. And you can hear her poetry in Wisconsin Life Archives. She is an MFA graduate from Hamline University. Araceli was born and raised in Madison, Wisconsin. Her parents were migrant farmworkers from Guanajuato, Mexico, and from whom she still gathers her strength. She recently co-edited a poetry anthology with Flying Ketchup Press, the very edge poems that can be bought at local bookstores and Amazon. She was also featured in the National Anthology, Hispanic Star Rising. Araceli was named Wisconsin's Most Influential Latina by the Wisconsin State Journal and Madison Three Sixty-Five. Her poem Los Chico y Chicas de Blossom Street was made into an animated short produced by PBS Wisconsin and One Gold from the Milwaukee Press Club. Araceli teaches picture book writing and holds contemplative writing circles. She volunteers each year for the Yara Hara Writing Conference and teaches bilingual poetic craft to the Spanish youth winners. Currently, Araceli is planting seeds as a social justice speaker and founder of a Latina mentoring program, Midwest Mejures, that allows Latinas to upscale their tech knowledge and increase their earning potential while creating a positive impact on marginalized communities. In her words about being a poet, "To me, being a Latinx writer means to be able to catch fire, to bring forth something from labor and sweat, to have enough when there's not a lot." She's organized community art-based programs with libraries and other artists in the area. She's a teaching artist and has been trained at the Kennedy Center of Arts hosted by the Overture Center. Araceli is often sought out as a local curator for Latinx artists and has been featured in several artsy shows. Follow her on Instagram at @araceliasparza, speaker, for more Chingona Bruja talks, classes, and events. Please welcome Araceli Asparza.
Gracias. Gracias a todas. Thank you so very much for this opportunity, Angie, our first Latina poet laureate here of Madison. For context, my poem is called Sidewalks. I wrote this poem. It's crafted of a song from Maná, a very popular Mexican rock band from the Los Desaparecidos. Desaparecidos means disappeared ones. He wrote this song to talk about the disappeared ones from Mexico because of political reasons. I wrote this poem in September of two thousand and eighteen, following the four days of terror where ICE deportation officers arrested eighty-three immigrants across Wisconsin, including twenty from Dane County. Here is this poem. Sidewalks. Oh, yo, yo. There are ghosts walking out here who used to work, who fixed cars, who cleaned houses, who cared for their children. This has never happened to me. But I see ghosts of my people walking out here on these streets. Have you seen my sister? She's named after mi abuela. She never came home after school. Her boyfriend says she hasn't seen her in days. We checked in the hospitals, but they said no one by that name was there. I see ghosts walking out on these streets. Who took them? Last night, whoa, whoa, yo, yo, as I walked, I heard the echo stories of these bodies who were taken. Everyone was watching on their phones, and they forgot to look at the faces of who cleaned, who fixed, and who walked on these streets, who were part of our nation, who had a purpose, a function. Where did they go? Oh, oh, yo, yo. I see ghosts walking on these streets. Thank you. Thank you, Araceli. You're getting a virtual round of applause. I hope you can see that. And thank you, Angie, as always, for bringing poetry into this space. We very much appreciate that, but also everything you do as our poet laureate. We'll move on then to honoring resolutions. Item number two is Legisstar seven-two-one-five-four, recognizing June two thousand and twenty as Pride Month in the city of Madison. And we'll start with Alder Heck.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas LGBTQ pride was started by the Stonewall Rebellion of nineteen sixty-nine, led by Black and Brown LGBTQ plus people. And whereas in nineteen sixty-nine, just months after the Stonewall uprising, the Madison Alliance for Homosexual Equality was founded as Wisconsin's first gay rights organization. And whereas in nineteen seventy-three, Judy Greenspan was the first out lesbian in the nation to run for public office when she sought election to the Madison School Board after she and others had been denied the right to speak in Madison high schools. And whereas the city of Madison in nineteen seventy-five became the first place in Wisconsin and one of the earliest in the country to ban discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation by amending its equal opportunities ordinance. And whereas Alder Jim Yedon was appointed to the city council in the fall of nineteen seventy-six and elected in the spring of nineteen seventy-seven, and was the first openly gay man elected to a city council in the United States. And whereas when the Madison Equal Rights Ordinance came under attack from an anti-gay movement motivated by activist Anita Bryant in nineteen seventy-eight, Madison successfully defended its ordinance, even though similar anti-discrimination ordinances were repealed in state capitals like St. Paul, Minnesota, and Eugene, Oregon. And whereas in nineteen eighty-two, Madison State Representative David Clarenbach skillfully led the fight to pass a first in the nation state gay rights law, which was signed by Republican Governor Lee Sherman-Dreyfus. And whereas the Fifth Annual Conference of Gay and Lesbian Officials was hosted in Madison in nineteen eighty-nine at the state capitol with a local host committee chaired by Dane County Supervisors Dick Wagner and Tammy Baldwin. And...
Whereas Black and Brown LGBTQ plus people have been leaders in advancing social change, creating and shifting culture. And whereas Ricardo Gonzalez was the first openly gay Latino officially elected to public office in the United States when he was elected to Madison City Council in nineteen eighty-nine. And whereas Alder Jim McFarland created the state's first domestic partnership registry in nineteen ninety by ordinance, affording limited rights to same-sex couples. And whereas in two thousand, the city became the first place in Wisconsin to prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender identity by amending the Equal Opportunities Ordinance. And whereas Dane County Supervisor Tammy Baldwin became the first openly gay LGBTQ plus member of the Wisconsin State Assembly in nineteen ninety-three, and the first openly LGBTQ plus non-incumbent elected to the U.S. House of Representatives in nineteen ninety-eight, and became the first out LGBTQ plus U.S. Senator in our nation's history in two thousand and thirteen. And whereas Dane County Supervisor Mark Pocan became the first openly gay man to be elected to the State Assembly in nineteen ninety-eight, and became the first openly gay non-incumbent married man to be elected to United States Congress in two thousand and twelve. And whereas Outreach LGBTQ plus Community Center was founded in nineteen ninety-eight with the merger of the United and Madison Gay Lesbian Resource Center and continues its mission of committing to equity and quality of life for all LGBTQ plus people through community building, health and human resources, and economic, social, and racial justice advocacy. And whereas Freedom, Inc., created in two thousand and three, is Madison's first nonprofit with a focus and mission on ending violence against Asian and Southeast Asian LGBTQ plus and fighting for their rights, dignity, and wellness. And...
Whereas Alanza Latina, now known as Argolio Latinx, has been working since two thousand and seven to build a just place for the Latinx LGBTQ plus community in Dane County. And whereas in two thousand and fifteen, Wisconsin-born retired U.S. Army Colonel and transgender advocate Jerry Swakowski, the highest-ranking transgender veteran, was the first woman to legitimately wear a U.S. Army infantry uniform. Swakowski is also the first person to have been granted an official change of gender marker on their military record. And whereas Satya Rhodes Conway was elected the city of Madison's first openly lesbian mayor on April two, two thousand and nineteen. And the city of Madison has a proud history protecting LGBTQ plus rights and advancing LGBTQ plus equality. And whereas Madison activist, historian, and county board supervisor Dick Wagner published many important articles and analysis about the unique history of the LGBTQ plus community in Wisconsin, culminating with a two-volume work on Wisconsin LGBTQ plus history. The city mourning mourned his passing on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway raised the rainbow pride flag over Madison for the first time on June third, two thousand and nineteen, and lit the Madison Municipal Building in rainbow colors. And Governor Tony Evers raised the rainbow pride flag for the first time over every state office building in Wisconsin on June seventh, two thousand and nineteen. And in two thousand and twenty-two, both officials conducted flag raisings using the New Progress Pride Flag. And whereas our LGBTQ plus youth, especially transgender youth, have bravely faced discrimination in Wisconsin communities and schools and organized to fight back against discriminatory, unconstitutional partisan attacks in the Wisconsin Legislature. And Wisconsin LGBTQ Policy Advocacy Coalition has been organizing, challenging lobbying, and testifying against the anti-transgender bills that have been introduced in the two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two legislative sessions. And whereas many marches, picnics, and commemorations were canceled due to the two thousand and twenty-one coronavirus pandemic, but in two thousand and twenty-two are now coming back with a bang, including Outreach LGBTQ plus Community Centers, Fourth Annual Magic Pride Festival, Sunday, August twenty-first, from one PM to six PM at Warner Park in Madison. And whereas the city of Madison recognizes the LGBTQ plus community as an important part of the diversity of the greater Madison community and appreciates their contributions to our economy, culture, neighborhoods, and city.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Madison declares June two thousand and twenty as Pride Month in the city of Madison. And we will take that as being moved by Alder Heck and seconded by Alder Bennett unless there's objection. And we have with us today Amira Piorti, who's a student at Madison's Memorial High School, to accept the proclamation. Amira?
Thank you, Mayor Rhodes Conway and all the people. I am honored to accept this resolution. My name is Amira Pirotti. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm a youth activist for gender justice. I am a TEDx speaker, a recent graduate of Memorial High School, and have advocated for trans and LGBTQ plus rights over the past few years. June marks the anniversary of the Stonewall Riots, led by Black and Brown queer and gender expansive people fighting against police brutality. Leaders like Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, Ms. Major Griffin Gracie, and Stormy DeLavry were the linchpins for the modern U.S. queer rights movement, following in the footsteps of the leaders of Cooper's Donuts, Dewey's Lunch Counter, and Compton's Cafeteria Riots. But LGBTQ plus history is erased from school curriculum, even in states where it is still legal to say gay and trans. Youth don't get lessons on safe sex for queer relationships, intersex bodies, and polyamory. Since the start of the year, trans people have faced over three hundred new pieces of legislation attempting to remove us from public life. Two-spirit people are fighting for basic rights to land, clean water, and their full autonomy, all of which were theirs long before European colonists ever set foot on these shores. And we are still in an epidemic of violence against Black and Brown trans people. Pride is more than just the history of our accomplishments, but about using our joy and community to fight against continued oppression. No few words can fully encapsulate the severity of our current situation, and all too often attacks on our community, especially on trans, intersex, BIPOC, and disabled folks, are only shared by queer-led media. But instead of focusing on the oppression we are facing, I want to highlight our advocacy work. The two thousand and twenty Brooklyn Liberation March, organized by Black, trans, and queer leaders to demand justice for Tony McDade, Dominique Vels, and other murdered Black trans people, attracted over fifteen thousand participants. The Oakwood Project is a Black trans fan-led organization, providing money and food to the Black trans community. Bambi Salseido and the Trans Latina Coalition fought tirelessly and achieved an additional thirteen million dollars in the California state budget for trans wellness. And in Wisconsin, as a result of a wave of anti-trans bills introduced by our state legislature, a group of organizations and activists came together to create the Wisconsin Trans Rights Coalition, of which I am a part. Perhaps most importantly, youth have continued to fight for each other, helping each other process after sexual assault, comforting each other after each attack on our existence, sharing resources and transition tips, and providing much-needed hope, laughter, and community. I know families deciding on their children's health care based on election schedules in case the one person who is blocking the legislature from ending trans health care is elected out of office. I know youth who have anonymously shared their stories to stop a lawsuit that would force their school to out them to transphobic families, thus placing them at risk at homelessness. And I know youth who have become specialists on Title IX and grassroots resources so they can support their friends. We learn to support each other from the generations of activists before us, and we will continue to do so. And to anyone listening, please remember to support your trans children. Donate to grassroots and BIPOC-led efforts. Volunteer at organizations like Freedom, Inc., Diverse and Resilient, and Outreach LGBT Center. Make your workplace welcoming and affirming for LGBTQ plus people. Vote out legislators who fail to uplift or actively harm queer and especially trans people. Listen to the most marginalized voices. Go out of your way to do the hard work. And most importantly, work to unlearn your own internal biases. Our liberation will come, and it will come from each other. Thank you, Mayor and all the people, and thank you all.
Thank you, Amira. You also are getting a virtual round of applause, which I hope you can see. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item two. That brings us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals from members of the body on tonight's agenda? Not seeing any disclosures or recusals. So we'll move to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. A consent agenda is moved with recommendation recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items which require an extraordinary roll-call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, three, items which alders have separated out for discussion slash debate purposes. This document lists extra majority items, additional agenda items with recommendations made from the floor, items requested for exclusion, and items and items introduced from the floor for referral. Just as a note, agenda items four through nine are public hearing items and will be on the consent agenda if removed, if not removed. Items requested for exclusion by alders. Item, agenda item fourteen, Legislative File Number seven-two-one-four-seven, reported the mayor submitting a resident committee appointment, Alder Harrington McKinney. Legislate- uh, agenda item sixteen, Legislative File seven-two-one-eight-nine, confirming the Madison Common Council meeting formats through September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, excluded by Alder Furman. Agenda item eighty-three, Legislative File seven-two-zero-zero-six, which is an introduction having to do with amending Madison general ordinances to add positions of transit, to add positions related to transit, to compensation group twenty-one. The recommended action by Alder Harrington McKinney is to add an additional referral to the Transportation and Policy Planning Board on seven-eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two. The reason for this additional referral is referencing the mission statement of the Transportation and Policy Planning Board. The agenda states that this was going to go to the Finance Committee on six-twenty-seven and come back to the Common Council on seven-twelve. The proposed change would bring it to the Finance Committee on seven-eleven, Transportation Policy Planning Board on seven-eighteen, and the Common Council on seven-nineteen. The Finance Committee would remain the lead committee. Agenda item one-oh-six, Legislative File seven-two-one-two-five, amending the two thousand and twenty-two Water Utility Capital Budget related to Well fourteen mitigation project, nineteenth Aldermatic District. And this also was going to be introduced, is on our agenda for introduction. And the correction is that it should have said Common Council on seven-twelve. But Alder Wihili has also requested a recommended action of an additional referral to the Water Utility Board on six-twenty, two thousand and twenty-two. The reason provided was the Water Utility Board needs to vote on this budget change. As presented on the agenda, this was supposed to go to the Finance Committee on six-twenty-seven, twenty-two, the Common Council on seven-twelve. The proposed change would put it at the Finance Committee on seven-eleven, the Water Utility Board on six-twenty-eight, and the Common Council on seven-nineteen. Items introduced from the floor for referral. These items are excluded from the consent agenda pursuant to MGO two dot zero-five-five, Legislative File seven-two-one-three-nine, amending the two thousand and twenty-two adopted operating budget for traffic engineering, accommodating increased costs for signage materials and training. This is being referred to the Finance Committee on six-twenty-seven, Transportation Committee on six-twenty-two, and the Common Council on seven-twelve. Legislative File seven-two-two-four-five, authorizing the expenditure for conceptual architectural and engineering design services for the State Street Campus Garage redevelopment project, second Aldermatic District, referred to the Finance Committee, which would be the lead committee, seven-eleven, Transportation Commission, seven-thirteen, and corrected from the consent agenda that was provided to the public and alders on the day of the Common Council meeting actually would be seven-nineteen. Items requested for exclusion by registered speakers as of noon on June twenty-first. Agenda item five, Legislative File six-nine-five-one-seven, second substitute zoning related to two-zero-zero-seven Roth Street, seven-zero-seven-zero-one-dash-seven-zero-five Ruskin Street, two-zero-zero-seven Roth Street, and one-eight-one-zero and one-eight-three-four Commercial Avenue, twelfth Aldermatic District, reported the Plan Commission is recommended action adopt. Agenda item six, Legislative File six-nine-five-one-nine, substitute, amending the city of Madison official map, consistent with recommendations in the adopted Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan, reported the Plan Commission recommended action adopt. Agenda item seven, Legislative File seven-one-two-two-one, rezoning property located at two-two-two and two-three-zero, Mary Street, sixth Aldermatic District, reported the Plan Commission, recommended action is place on file without prejudice. A clarification for the agenda that if there was a substitute motion to approve this item, it would require a two-thirds majority vote based on Wisconsin Statute six-six dot one-zero-zero-one-five-three. Agenda item eight, Legislative File seven-one-two-two-two, rezoning property located at two-two-two-dash-two-three-two, East- East Allen Avenue, 14th Aldermatic District, reported the Plan Commission, recommend action adopt with conditions. A late addition from the Clerk's Office Agenda Item that would be part of the consent agenda with an additional recommendation as noted, Agenda Item 82, Legislative File 71825, adopt the substitute, which designates City of Madison polling locations for the 2022 partisan primary. Recommended action, adopt substitute. That version, version two, is in Legistar, again Legislative Item 71825 on our agenda as 82. I saw a moment ago, we had a different, additional exclusions of Agenda Item 4, Agenda Item 56, and Agenda Item 72.
Thank you, President Furman. And are there any additional exclusions from the consent agenda? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to reference Legislative File Number 72139. It's to be referred to the Transportation Commission on 6/22, which is tomorrow. I would like to change that to July the 13th. That will allow us enough time to review it and have it back to the council for their 7/12 meeting.
I'm sorry, Alder, you're suggesting a referral to the Transportation Commission on what date?
July the 13th. That is our next meeting. Tomorrow is June the 22nd. I am referring that until July the 13th rather than tomorrow's meeting.
Which would mean then that it would have to go to the 7/19 Common Council meeting.
Okay.
Which is the item is that, Mayor?
That is an introduction from the floor, Legislative File 72139.
Thank you.
Alder Harrington McKinney, any additional exclusions?
No further exclusions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other exclusions from the consent agenda? Or requests for referrals or sponsorship? Seeing none, then let me go over that again because there was a lot and not particularly in order. Alder Carter, did you have something?
Well, I have a question on, this is introduced from the floor for referral also. 72245 is going to the Finance Committee on 7/11, the Transportation Commission on 7/13, and then Common Council on 7/12.
As President Furman referenced in his corrections, it will go to the Common Council on 7/19.
Okay, great. That's all I care about.
Thank you, Alder. All right, so on, staying on the consent agenda is Item 82, where the recommended action and what you'll be voting on is to adopt the substitute from the Clerk's Office. And then the following items will be excluded from the consent agenda. Agenda Items 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 14, 16, 56, 72, 83, 106, and two introductions from the floor. One more time. That's Agenda Items 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 14, 16, 56, 72, 83, 106, and two introductions from the floor. All right. All right, President Furman, a motion?
Move approval.
I can't. Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and any staff who were here for any items that I, whose numbers I did not just read, you are free to go. And that will take us to public comment. Alder Abassa, question?
Yeah, really good question. I know we had a public comment and we could talk after public comment, but Agenda Item Number 5 and 6, I catch that later. I think so six need to come first because five is depend on six and previous agenda item. Six was always first, which is official mapping. And that official mapping will determine how the zoning will change. So I'm not sure if right now we can go with that sequence when we come on a debate discussion. Perhaps we can take six first after four and then go to the fifth one.
Yeah, thank you, Alder. I was going to suggest that we take five and six up together since they're dealing with the same thing. But if not, certainly we can place six first.
Sure.
And I should note while we're discussing it that Items 8 and 72 are also dealing with the same development proposal. So we probably should take those two up together as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Yeah, I believe that's also the case. Well, I guess they were all on consent. Never mind. The Manona Drive ones had similar, but I guess they're all, I think they're all left on consent, so it'll be a non-issue.
I believe so. Thank you, Alder. All right. Now to public comment. The first item that we have public comment on is Agenda Item 4. This is an alternate creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances regarding the zoning of a property at 702 Ruskin Street. And we have one registrant, Brody Richter of District 4, representing J.R. Pike Corporation and other owners. Brody?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am speaking on behalf of the owners of the property at 702 Ruskin. As some of the Alders may be aware, this property was originally proposed for a rezone to partially to CCT zoning and partially to conservancy. At the Plan Commission, we were able to convince the Plan Commission that the conservancy rezone was inappropriate for this piece of property, which resulted in a recommendation to the Common Council of a rezone of a portion of the property to CCT and leaving a portion of the property as light industrial. Excuse me. Our ask today is that the council consider leaving the entire property zoned as light industrial. We have a 99-year tenant on the property that has about 24 years left on their lease. They are a permitted use under light industrial. We have not done the analysis to confirm if they would be a permitted use under CCT zoning. Obviously, they'd be grandfathered in. However, we don't want to run the risk of losing their permitted use due to any sort of amendment to the property. In addition, we think that leaving it as light industrial will allow for a more appropriate rezone at the time at which the property is redeveloped, which likely will not happen for some time yet. And the split zoning of a single piece of property seems inappropriate and likely cumbersome in that it would lead to a required rezone no matter what the future use is. And so our ask today is that the council consider leaving the zoning for the entire 702 Ruskin property as light industrial and deny the recommended action of split zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we'll go on to Item 5, which is a second substitute, creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances regarding the zoning at 2007 Roth 701 to 705 Ruskin, and 1810 and 1834 Commercial. Our first registrant on Item 5 is Paul Noldner of Maple Bluff, representing Friends of Hartmire Natural Area, to be followed by Barbara Noldner.
Yeah. Hi, am I on?
You are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rhodes Conley, President Furman, and Madison Alders. I'm Paul Noldner, Ambassador of Fun, Friends of Urban Nature, which is a partnership with Madison Parks, Madison Audubon Environmental and Friends of Parks groups that for the past 10 years has helped co-sponsor free, welcoming, diverse, family and kids-friendly, naturalist-led, bird and nature adventures with 120 outings every year and two every weekend in nearby Madison parks and natural areas, much like the area being zoned as a park today. Today, I'm playing with three bands from Make Music Madison, next up at Willie Street Park, and in between, speaking with you on Zoom from Bebe Clark Beach. People need music and nature in their lives. Nature is music for the eyes, if I may throw in a little bit of poetry. I'm speaking here as the Chair of Friends of Hartmire Natural Area, representing strong community support for saving this historic urban wetland area for people and wildlife to enjoy. The Plan Commission has recommended adoption of the developers' compromised street plan and zoning, and we support that. This hard-fought compromise saves a sustainable, quiet nature park while creating more senior and low-income housing. The Item 5, 69715, Second Substitute Zoning, as approved by the Plan Commission, allows a developer to add the most senior and low-income housing. And it also saves a larger, safer, quieter, more sustainable nature conservation park for people and wildlife to enjoy. The Item 6, 69719, Substitute Street Mapping, still includes the Omsap-Coolidge Street connection the city wants, if the railroad permits it, but avoids creating an unsafe traffic shortcut right next to the quiet park and right between senior and low-income housing for traffic that can use existing major east-west arteries a block away at Ebers and Commercial. The substitute street mapping also saves space to add a safer, separate walk-in bike path with citywide connections for families and schoolkids, green transportation, and recreation. While referred to by the city as low-quality because it looks uncomfortable and messy, the Wetland Pond upends old oaks and large watering tree lines to provide a quiet urban nature refuge that still supports nesting cranes, denning foxes, deer, large stands of high-quality milkweed for monarch butterflies, wood ducks, singing frogs, rare orchids, old oaks and cottonwoods, and many more species. These living creatures are telling us it must be pretty high-quality to sustain this vibrant ecosystem in spite of 100 years of neglect, and it's very restorable. Keeping a sustainable urban nature refuge also aligns with Madison and Omsap goals for climate, pollinators, water, sustainability, health, and equity. It provides equitable, healthy access to nearby nature for seniors and low-income families in the new development, for nearby neighborhoods and schoolkids, and for a rapidly growing area population. The Second Substitute Zoning protects almost all of the carpe sea map environmental corridors that this city should support. This hard-fought developer-proposed compromise is a win-win-win-win-win. For the developers, senior and low-income housing, the community, city, and environment, please make a motion and vote to adopt Agenda Item 5, Second Substitute Zoning, and Item 6, Substitute Street Mapping, as approved by the Plan Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Barbara Noldner, also of Maple Bluff, to be followed by Jennifer Argalander.
Hi. Please support Agenda Item 5 and 6 to create the Conservation Natural Park boundary for the Hartmire Natural Area and substitute street map as supported by the Planning Commission. This park is a diamond in the rough. Putting a big X of streets through the park and the neighborhood is a bad idea. Please preserve this beautiful park and natural area for future generations to enjoy in a quiet neighborhood without a large X of streets through the park and the neighborhood. Preserving this park boundary comes close to the 16 acres promised to the people of Madison by the Common Council and is close to the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission recommendations to preserve natural areas in Madison. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jennifer Argalander of District 12, to be followed by Anthony Fernandez.
May I ask a question? Are we discussing Item 5 or Item 6, or am I to do both my presentations together?
This is Item 5.
Okay. So I only partially support Item 5 because I do not support RMX zoning on the parcel of 701, 705 Ruskin or 2007 Roth Street because it is way too close to the wetland area and it would degrade the wetlands. But I have more to say about Item 6, so you call me again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Anthony Fernandez of District 11, to be followed by Beth Slies.
Thank you. So I appreciate this opportunity. I was kind of invited to speak. Just as disclosure, I am on the Plan Board. I made the motion in favor of this resolution, and I spoke in favor of it. So that's on the record. And I, but I want to add that I have a deep respect for staff. I know that my recommendation was contrary to their recommendation. But I want to say that I don't claim to know everything about this issue. There could very well be nuances that I'm not familiar with. But I did feel that based on the information that I had in front of me, it was really important to express my opinion on a couple of issues. So three things I want to touch base on. First of all, the, I am supporting the substitute resolution, of course, which results in two T intersections instead of a cross, instead of a four-way intersection. One of the reasons for the four-way intersection put forward is that the railroad crossing would be more likely to be approved by the Railroad and the Office of Commission of Railroads. And I disagree with that professionally. So I was a traffic engineer, civil engineer, and transportation engineer for 30-some years, almost 20 before joining the city and about 17 with the city. And part of my portfolio was OCR crossings, railroad crossings. So I have some expertise in the field. And it's my opinion that both of the proposals will be seen equally by the railroad, not giving preference to the substitute one. But there was some indication that they would see the first one, the original one, as a modification of a crossing, and the second one as a new crossing, and that would prejudice their approach to it. But actually, I disagree with that. They're going to look at the geometry of that. Basically, as it crosses, they're going to be interested in the geometry, in the volumes, in the distance between the existing crossing and the proposed crossing. They are not really going to be interested in whether that retains its name, same street name, and they will not consider it a modification of an existing crossing. So I'm open to questions on that later. But I basically think that the two alternatives are exactly equal with regard to their chance of being approved by the Office of Commission of Railroads. The other issue was, there was some suggestion that the four-way intersection would be safer for bicycles and pedestrians. Again, my portfolio with the city for 17 years was bicycle facilities. And part of my job is to stay current with the literature, research, et cetera. I'm not aware of any data, research, recommendations of DOT or other bodies whatsoever that would support that kind of contention that a four-way intersection is somehow inherently safer than two T intersections.
That is time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Beth Slies of District 18.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Mayor, President Furman, and Alders. I hope by now you've had a chance to look at my packet of information regarding the property at 2007 Roth Street, which is the wetland area, also known as the Hartmire Natural Area. Most of that property is slated for roadways and high-rise apartments and is a previously identified indigenous cemetery burial site area that is shown on the map that I had included in your packets. It's called the Track Side, and it contains an unsurveyed potential mound site and savanna area that contains large burlough trees, described by Mr. Quackenbush, the Historic Preservation Officer for the Ho-Chunk Nation, as an environmentally unique resource. The long, narrow, blue area in the center of that map shows the area which is being planned for roads and construction. The Oscar Meyer property immediately adjacent also contains a catalog burial site at the north end of the property. While some of the area at 2007 Roth was historically disturbed through the years, the low-lying area that has the water feature with the original grade, and in particular, the savanna near the large oak trees on Roth Street are largely undisturbed and have not been surveyed, as confirmed by Amy Rosebrow of the Wisconsin Historical Society. I recently reached out to the Ho-Chunk Nation and spoke at length with Mr. Bill Quackenbush, Historic Preservation Officer for the Ho-Chunk Nation. He's interested in meeting to discuss the potential mound site at the property. He suggested the importance of protecting the savanna area near the oak trees and indicated that he has access to ground-penetrating radar for a preliminary survey of the area of the potential mound site. He spoke to the natural area and the fact that sandhill cranes are nesting there at the wetland, and we should consider not mowing at the site for the betterment of the habitat. Mr. Quackenbush has offered to meet and to include the landowners and the WHS to discuss this area. I hope that this can occur soon before the area is seriously further disrupted. Let us not desecrate. We need to be careful to honor our neighbors, the Ho-Chunk Nation, and their ancestors in this identity. in this identified cemetery burial site. We need to conduct a site survey to make sure we do not disturb or destroy artifacts or burial sites in this area. The maps that are included in that were done on behalf of the City of Madison Metro as part of their bus barn purchase of the north end of the Oscar Meyer property. It is consulting work that was completed for the City of Madison in looking at the area, as it pertains to burial sites, cemetery areas, as well as archaeological areas. I support keeping all 16 acres of natural area, was adopted by the Common Council in July of 2020, for a dedicated green and open space. None of the existing changes, substitutions, et cetera, offer that as an opportunity. I strongly...
That is time. Thank you. That's our last registrant wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants on Item 5? Alder Abbas.
And thank you very much. Can we bring back Commissioner Fernandez, Anthony Fernandez, please?
Is Tony still with us?
I am.
Go ahead, Alder.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm not sure calling you Tony or Commissioner Fernandez.
Tony is just fine.
Tony's fine. Thank you very much. Yeah, you were talking about the T-section and your professional experience about the safety of it, and the call got, you know, three-minute time was all that I would love to hear. Are you a professional opinion about the bicycle safety?
Well, thanks. So, you know, every intersection has conflict, potential conflict points, but actually, in my opinion, to encounter fewer conflict points at one time is actually an easier task for a bicyclist. So even if a particular movement through there would encounter the same number of possible conflicts with, say, oncoming traffic or merging with a right turn or something like that, it's still better to encounter it in two separate intersections because it makes the task of monitoring the different approaches easier. And I also just want to add that that's, you know, my professional opinion from being familiar with the research, et cetera, but I've also been a bicycle commuter for decades and decades. And I will say that's also my personal experience, that I don't see any reason to prefer a four-legged intersection. So that's basically what I wanted to say about that. There could be some devils in the details, some possible reason why this wouldn't work, but on the face of it, in general, I think the two-T intersections are at least as safe, probably safer than a four-legged intersection for pedestrians and bicycles. There could be other advantages to the four-legged intersection for metro or other reasons, but I'm just speaking for pedestrians and bicyclists.
Thank you so much. And could you please also briefly speak about railroad crossing and two-T or four-way? Do you see any benefit either way?
I don't see any difference in how the railroad will look at the issue. They're going to be interested in how far, how much the crossing is being moved, what the geometry of that new crossing is, what angle it is crossed at, what are the volumes. And in all those respects, the two alternatives are exactly identical. They're not going to be hampered to believe that one of them is a modification and the other one is a new crossing. Now, the one possible point of confusion here, a new crossing in the sense of an additional crossing would be vigorously opposed by the railroad and would be very difficult to get OCR approval. So that could have been part of the confusion, but in neither case is this a net additional crossing. In both cases, we're closing one crossing, adding a new crossing. So I think from the railroad's perspective, they're going to see these as absolutely identical. They may not even look as far out to see exactly what the road connection is. From their standpoint, these two will be absolutely identical alternatives, and I would say have a very strong chance of being approved by the OCR.
Thank you so much, Tony, for your service for the City of Madison, and also as well as a Commissioner of Plan Commission. Really appreciate that. I have one more question, Madam Mayor, for Beth.
And we have Beth back, please.
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Could you please speak a little bit about the Native American mound and a little bit share history to the council? There are also some misunderstanding, like there's no archaeological site there. That's what was mentioned during the Plan Commission meeting, that this is not archaeological site, or at least it's not explored. Could you please speak to that?
I sure can. Thank you, Alder Abbas. I have been actively engaged with the Oscar Meyer Special Area Planning process for about five years now, since the beginning of it, and through the course of working on learning about the issues, as you know, there were many pieces to that plan. It was a very comprehensive... I learned about indigenous burial sites and cemeteries for that area. And just in learning about that, I was looking at the property and noticed that there was an elevated site on the property and had an image of LIDAR that was given to me by a professor at UW, and it showed an elevated area. I gave, I invited Mr. Phil Milhouse from the Archaeological Conservancy to the site last December, so that he could look at it. He's the Regional Director for the Archaeological Conservancy, and he looked at the area by the old oak trees on Roth Street and also thought that it would be worth conducting a site survey there, given the history. He had also been involved with some archaeological work when that radio tower was put in, the microwave tower over by the railroad tracks. And so also engaged was the State Historical Society staff person from there, as well as Amy Rosebrow, who's the mound specialist. Dr. Sibko, the state archaeologist, had gone by the site, and they expressed to me in emails that there was interest in potentially conducting a survey, but that they could not force anyone to do a survey necessarily, like the city or the landowners. And through the course of the discovery work, I also asked in particular Amy Rosebrow about, granted, this area has been disturbed, and it was a farm, the Hartmeyers owned it, that was a farm there, as well as baseball fields, as we've all seen, as Oscar Meyer was pumping down the wells, pumping lots of groundwater. And so that area was pretty much dried up, but there was always a wet spot on air photos. So this area has a rich history of being utilized by Native Americans. In an article in the Wisconsin State Journal from 1937, there was a story there about ditching happening along Roth Street and that they had found bones, and they gave these bundles of bones to this then-state archaeologist, Mr. Charles E. Brown. This area needs to be surveyed. It needs to be addressed with respect. And what is the harm in doing the discovery? And if we find that there isn't anything there before we cut through roads or, you know, develop this site, what is the harm in knowing before we do any harm or any desecration to this area? Mr. Quackenbush also has gone by the site, and we had a very candid conversation at the end of May, and he would like to see a coming-together of the State Historical Society with himself to discuss the possibility of conducting some kind of survey there, especially in the area around the old oak trees. The trees there, an arborist has said they're 200 years old. It's not uncommon for burial mounds to have large trees growing out of them. I know that over at Mendota Mental Health, there are quite a few mounds there that I've toured, with Amy Rosebrow, actually, that do have large trees coming up out of them. So I do this out of great respect. I do this out of great respect.
Appreciate that. No further questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for registrants on Item 5? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to Item 6, which is a substitute amending the City of Madison official map to establish map reservations for future streets, consistent with the adopted Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan. Our first registrant on Item 6 is Paul Noldner of Maple Bluff, representing Friends of Hartmire Natural Area, to be followed by Barbara Noldner.
Mayor, I think they left.
All right, then we'll come back to Jennifer Argalander of District 12, to be followed by David Bierman.
Thank you. I support Agenda Item 6, which is the street mapping as proposed by the developer, supported by Alder Abbas, Sherman Neighborhood Association, Friends of Hartmire Environmental Groups, and the Northside Community, and was approved by the Plan Commission. This street design would have the least impact on existing diverse plant, animal, and tree life, and would maintain at least 15 of the 16 acres promised for the Conservation Natural Area, which includes a functioning wetland. There would be less concrete surfaces, resulting in less damage to the natural area, less demanding water, damaging water and salt runoff, and less maintenance by the city. Less impervious surfaces would help address Madison's climate, carbon, and clean water goals, as well as equitable, safe, walkable access to nearby nature for a rapidly growing neighborhood and area schoolkids. In addition, the substitute road would avoid encouraging unsafe cut-through traffic next to the natural area and the senior and low-income housing. This substitute road would protect the important mature tree line, which currently has many healthy large trees that are critical for shelter habitat and food source for the birds and animals. A conservancy should not look like a golf course. Removing the mature tree line and planting young trees is a ridiculous argument. It would take decades before those new trees could replace any significant percentage of the carbon and environmental loss caused by destroying these mature trees. Although housing is important, the city has lost sight of its equally important goals of green transportation, climate mitigation, and equitable access for all Madisonians to celebrate nature and escape the toxic stressors of life. We in the community, the local affected businesses, and the developer really do not want any through road other than access to the development. However, we have come together to support a compromised substitute road. I am asking the Alders to do the right thing for the environment, for the community, for local business, for the developers, and for the rich biodiversity found in this area, and please adopt the substitute street mapping. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is David Bierman of District 18, to be followed by Melissa Huggins.
I request the Common Council adopt Agenda Item 6, amending the City of Madison official street mapping, alternate alignment, version 2. These initiatives encompass a stakeholder compromise which maximizes developer utilization for housing, minimizes impacts of adjacent known and potential historical and cultural resources, and limits intrusion in the environmental wetland-upland corridor. It also provides equal Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan roadway parcel goals, permitting all vehicular use types, while maximizing pedestrian and public safety, and minimizes impervious paved surface runoff. The original plan roadway concept, version 1, with its 47% larger roadway surface area, presents a higher risk of traffic interface interaction with the residents of the proposed development, and represents a loss of 60, 80 units of housing. Its design forces unneeded wanton intrusion and destruction of the existing Roth Street wetland environmental and historical cultural resources corridors, ignoring the City of Madison result goals for preservation, protection enhancement of water resources, ordinance compliance, environmental wetland protection, historic and cultural preservation, and green, sustainable, and equitable development. It has been represented to you in the city's plan and staff documents that these amendments will threaten the proposed relocation of Roth Street railroad grade crossing. As a transportation engineer with 36 years of experience in grade crossing safety and highway rail interface design, I can testify that Federal Railroad Administration, the Wisconsin Office Commissioner of Railroads, and the railroad owner, Canadian Pacific Railway, will review the crossing proposal only on the merits of public safety interaction with the railroad operational safety and crossing utilization frequency. Based on those merits, version 2 proposal will pose a lower design speed with the T-intersection at Oakley Street and exhibit a greater public safety and operational train safety rating by the FRA, Federal Railroad Administration, Office Commissioner of Railroads, and the Canadian Pacific Railroad. These amendments represent a community collaboration to accommodate a housing, transportation, green, and open space, wetland, wildlife, and cultural resource protection and preservation goals, which the City of Madison has resolved to uphold in fostering the public trust. These amendment versions have been adopted and recommended by the City Plan Commission. These are unquestionably easy action decisions for you, the Alders, to adopt. Please adopt Agenda Item 6, amending the City of Madison official reservation for future streets and highways map substitute for Resolution Roth-Hockley-Coolidge for alternate alignment, version 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Melissa Huggins of District 4, to be representing Lincoln Avenue Capital, to be followed by Kevin McDonald.
Melissa, you need to unmute yourself. Kenny should see a prompt to unmute. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Alders. I am here representing Lincoln Avenue Capital, and I wanted to direct you to an email I sent this afternoon, which includes... Oh, thank you. There they are. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood the details of the trade-offs that we have with regards to this site. So what you see here is really a fit plan under the original street mapping and a fit plan underneath what the proposed substitute amendment. And as you can see, we would lose a significant amount of affordable housing, which, as we know, we need. So I would strongly urge you to support this item number 6. I think it is a win-win for everyone in terms of getting the city what it needs, in terms of implementing the recommendations in the Oscar Meyer plan, ensuring a railroad crossing, and also providing the maximum number of affordable housing units. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kevin McDonald from Santa Monica, California, representing Lincoln Avenue Capital, to be followed by Matt Haas.
Hello, and thanks to everyone for having us this evening. I'll try to keep it brief because I know, well, a number of you have heard a lot of the details, but my name is Kevin McDonald. I'm a regional development partner with Lincoln Avenue Capital. We're a mission-driven, affordable housing company with over 20,000 units across the country. And again, really what we're talking about here today is the qualified census tract that we were able to extend at the end of 2021. As the track was expiring, we worked with WEDA in order to extend it, and it was really accomplished through significant local and statewide support for extending the qualified census tract, and which was really driven by many of the plans that the council had approved as part of the special area plan. And so now that we were successful in getting the qualified census tract approved and extended, our site is really the only affordable housing development that will be in position to utilize the qualified census tract, and we now have a quicker timeline in order to make sure that can happen. So in summary, we submitted two applications to WEDA that included two developments. One of the applications included an application with 300 units and a second with 250 units, which really represents the senior housing development that you see on the screen, and then the 300-unit development is the family housing development that you see on the screen. So, and really, our main point is, any major changes or delays could really risk the opportunity of creating the affordable housing that we all know is very needed in the city. So we're really excited to be working on one of the first major developments under the Oscar Meyer Area Special Plan, and really appreciate the years of work... under the Oscar Meyer Area Special Plan and really appreciate the years of work that have gone into the plan. So we strongly encourage you to approve Agenda Items Five and Six, and really so that the affordable housing that is needed can really be maximized and we don't end up losing eighty units and possibly the ability to do any affordable housing on the site at all. So thanks for the time, and please let us know if there are any questions.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Matt Haas of Verona, also representing Lincoln Avenue Capital, to be followed by Beth Sloyes.
Hi there. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the time. I'm Matt Hasi. I'm with JSD Professional Services, representing Lincoln Avenue Capital, and we are working with Lincoln Avenue to provide the civil engineering design services for this potential project. So as discussed a little bit earlier, I wanted to dive into a little bit of the details of some of the street layouts and some traffic analysis that we have conducted as a project team. So we worked with traffic analysis and design and analyzed, you know, the difference between the original and the substitute with regard to the impact to the railway crossing. I know a few opinions have been provided here this evening. Our analysis used anticipated traffic volumes and conservatively estimated others based on some DOT recent counts. And if we could go to the next slide. On this next slide, it indicates with the original option, in the worst-case scenario with traffic volumes, the worst-case traffic queue would be one hundred and twenty-five foot long, which is about five car lengths, leaving just about three hundred feet between the last car and the rail crossing. So safety concern in terms of queuing cars in this scenario is not necessarily there based on those basic merits. If we could go to the next slide. We also analyzed the similar scenario in our traffic analysis, and the worst-case scenario with the volumes presented produced a one hundred and fifty-foot queue or a six-car length backup, leaving about two hundred and seventy-five feet to the rail crossing. So between the two original options and substitute option, excuse me, they were very similar in their queuing and backing up and really very limited concern in terms of the railway crossing and the cars backing up. I will note one exception to the difference between the original and the substitute that could be discussed here is that the original option actually has somewhat of a less preferable site distance for eastbound traffic as compared to the substitute option. If you can imagine traffic traveling eastbound back towards Packers Avenue, getting ready to stop at a rail crossing, coming around some of those curves, there may be some current concerns for cars stopping in time for a rail or a train crossing the street. Next slide, please. The other item that we looked at was some bike and pedestrian crossing. I know some commentary was provided here already tonight. This really just kind of bolsters that. And what you're looking at here on this slide is the comparison between a four-way intersection and a typical T-intersection. So with a four-way intersection, you have sixteen.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Beth Sloyes of District 18 to be followed by Michelle Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to the road design, if we look at the maps that were presented by the developer this evening showing that Roth Street is intended to be vacated, and so anybody coming into the development could come down Roth Street, and as it's shown, can just turn right and go right into that north end of buildings for the senior citizens. And then people coming into the family housing could just come up Ruskin Parkway and then turn right and come in the back. So that whole stretch of roadway in front of the buildings really appears to me to be pretty unnecessary if it allows for public safety. It allows for people to come and go in and out of the development. And that would save a lot of money for the city as well as it would give people access to this development in a way that seems pretty safe. In conversation with the Canadian Pacific Railroad that I've had historically now for several years, they are part of the Federal Railroad Administration's system to reduce the number of crossings. It doesn't make sense to me to have five thousand average daily trips on the Coolidge extender as well as having over two thousand people living, well over two thousand people living within this area, bringing in bikes and pedestrians. It just seems like that would be a public safety issue of serious concern to both the railroad and to the Federal Railroad Administration by keyholing into this area with a pretty busy road and allowing that number of people to be out biking, pedestrianating, if that's even a word, in this area. So I support no road extender all the way through from Roth to Commercial, but to rather get creative and allow an entrance off of Ruskin for the family housing and an entrance off of Roth Street for the senior housing with no new railroad crossing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registrant wishing to speak is Michelle Martin of District 12, representing the Sherman Neighborhood Association.
Sorry, Michelle. I accidentally muted you. You're going to have to unmute yourself again, please. There you go. Thank you.
I'm representing the Sherman Neighborhood Association, and we support the substitute street mapping on Agenda Item Six for many of the reasons already mentioned by other people. This was approved by the Plan Commission on June thirteenth and has been approved by the Neighborhood Association. The road provides ample access to the area, preserves more green space, and maximizes the space that can be used for housing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other registrants wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants on Item Six, Alder Abbas?
Thank you so much. Can we get Matt Hasi, if pronouncing the last name right from Lincoln Avenue Capital?
Yes.
Yeah, Matt, thank you so much. Matt, you were talking about the conflict. And if staff don't mind, can they put that picture back about the conflict? I think so it's an important point about sixteen and the T-intersection and four-way. About conflict. Thank you, Director Stahl. I appreciate that. Yeah, could you please explain about the conflict situation here from the design standpoint?
Yeah, so what I was touching on is just the total number of conflicts between a four-way intersection and a typical T-intersection. So as this is showing, the four-way intersection has sixteen total conflicts with the four approaches, crossing a typical crosswalk scenario at that intersection. And then the T-intersection, just one of them has a total of nine conflicts. So if we add ours up from a pedestrian standpoint, we would have a total of eighteen conflicts if you have the two T-intersections, which is very comparable from a bike and pedestrian safety standpoint at each of these intersections. I guess a professional opinion of mine as well, similar to what Tony Fernandez said earlier this evening was, you know, handling a crossing typically, you're probably doing one crossing at one T-intersection and then another at the next intersection. And just knowing that you're only dealing with one or two approaches when you're crossing that instead of three, and whether they're merging or turning is just from a perspective is a bit safer. So I think, you know, just on a very high level with those merits, I don't see much difference in the safety between the two intersections. And really, they're very comparable. Another thing to note on that is that, just in general, safety can always be enhanced by adding additional traffic controls to accommodate whatever modes of transportation or pedestrians or volumes that are being used. So I think in both of these scenarios, you can have a very safe pedestrian and bike experience as well as a vehicle experience through these intersections.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I have a question for David Bierman.
I am here.
Yeah, thank you very much, David, for being here, and I read your whole letter. You mentioned you have thirty-six years of experience in railway road safety and highway rail design, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm just curious to know, you saw the substitute, you saw the regional map, and from your professional railway road experience, and feel free to share your experience, what you do with railway road for reference of this council and the people who are listening. I'm curious to hear your professional opinion on substitute as well as the original plan proposed by the staff.
So some of the items that were brought up with the intersection, the original version where it had the full intersection of Roth and Huxley and the curves leading to the railroad crossing would be a big red flag to any railroad review by the FRA, OCR, and the railroad company because of some of the things that were outlined, site distance, the true nature of the route, you know, those sort of factors. T-intersections adjacent to railroad crossings generally are traffics to eliminating device, making traffic slower, so they score higher points when looking at it from a railroad safety standpoint. There are a lot of other factors involved with this type of a crossing, especially its adjacent distance to Commercial Avenue, that will be negative to the railroad company. It will require an interlock device between the two crossings in a switching district. And for the FRA, OCR, that's the Office of Commissioner of Railroads and Railroad, it will be looked at rather negatively.
So what you're saying is just to put in a summary, the version two have a better chance for the crossing?
If there's any chance, it would be version two. They would strongly oppose version one with the site distance limiting and those factors as well.
Perfect. Very appreciate you. Thank you so much for coming and giving your testimony and answering those questions from your professional experience. I appreciate that. I have one last, thank you, one last question for Kevin McDonald.
Do we have Kevin still?
I'm here.
Hey, Kevin. Thank you for being here. I know that this question was asked at the Plan Commission. I think so it's an important question just to ask and get your opinion on record at Common Council. So if the substitute, if the council decide not to approve the substitute and go with the original plan, which according to the presentation has a reduction of eighty affordable housing units, what will happen to the future of the project, especially when you talk about VIDA funding and the application you submitted where you mentioned two hundred and fifty and three hundred unit, and now those will be reduced because of the council decision? I'm curious to hear what will happen to the project then.
Yeah, as I mentioned, that Plan Commission, it's unfortunately not a very straightforward answer, but it definitely would put the development potentially at risk of not being able to do anything. There are some scenarios that we could attempt to still move forward and, you know, but I don't want to say it would one hundred percent make it more challenging. But because we submitted with three hundred apartments on one phase and the second phase of two hundred and fifty, it really does limit us. There's some particular things when you are able to preserve a qualified census tract that once those applications go in and preserve the qualified census tract, we have very limited flexibility to make changes down the road.
Okay, that makes sense. And this last question is, so you are not taking any CDBG funding from City of Madison on this affordable housing project? Your main source of revenue is through VIDA, correct?
Correct. We are planning to apply for TIF funding, but we are not planning at the moment to apply for any CDBG funding.
All right. Thank you so much. No further question. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional questions for registrants on Item Six? Seeing none, we'll go to Item Seven, which is creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to rezone property at two twenty-two and two thirty Mary Street. Our first registrant wishing to speak is Ann Walker of District Six to be followed by Amira Katabi.
Good evening. I am discussing two two-two, two thirty Mary Street, which is located in a low-density residential area. Staff has recommended a change from TRU one from TRU two. It is worth noting that the Mary Street Apartments are the only apartment building of its size designated as TRU two. Other comparable properties have been zoned at a lower density. Last week at the Plan Commission, Mr. Bosman with Apex asserted that the density for the area was medium-high residential. That is not correct. The question of the density was raised in 2010 by Apex and was answered by Principal Planner Michael Wadlick with the city. Quote, "The 2006 City of Madison Comprehensive Plan includes the Mary Street area within a large area east of the river, recommended for low-density residential uses, not medium-density uses as suggested by your letter." There's also a question about the two thirty Mary Street referred to as the vacant lot. Two thirty Mary was described as the vacant lot is actually a green space requirement for the original development of two two-two. Originally, the development was allowed to retain one of the three houses that were removed, and hence the green space was offset. Brenda Conkle, also former Alder with the City of Madison, also addressed the issue, and she said, quote, "In addition, there are deed restrictions and our past development agreements prohibiting the development of one of the parcels included in the Apex site. This is the vacant strip to the east of two two-two, or being referred to as two thirty tonight." The Market Neighborhood Association Preservation Development also addressed the development proposal that Apex had on the table in 2010. Quote, "The Mary Street area in question is an environmentally vulnerable area that has not before been identified as an area in need of infill, example given current zoning or comprehensive plan." What did the committee mean by environmentally vulnerable? It's an area that floods, and it has repeatedly. It flooded in nineteen ninety-three. It flooded many times since, and in 2018, there was a flood that required the help of the National Guard to sandbag all the properties on that side of the river. The Friends of the Yarra River have also had some real reservations about development hugging the parkway. In essence, the group has said that they do not favor using public land as a private development's front yard. In addition, a factor to consider tonight is the Bus Rapid Transit overlay, which includes this location. TRU one would allow for forty units, and with Bus Rapid Transit, fifty-five. TRU two would allow for seventy-one units with BRT that would be around one hundred and twenty units per acre, which is a number that greatly exceeds the comp plan low-density designation. Conclusion, I support changing the zoning to conform with the City of Madison comp.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amira Katabi of District Six to be followed by Rebecca Parmentier.
Mayor, neither of those names are in the list.
All right. How about Randy Christensen of District Nineteen, representing Apex Real Estate, to be followed by Robert Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Alders. My name is Randy Christensen with Walter Wayne Development, representing Bruce Bosman of Apex Real Estate Holdings. Bruce, unfortunately, is out of town, so he will not be able to attend. Bruce has owned these properties for over twenty-five years, and he wishes to, our development team wishes to redevelop these particular parcels. With that in mind, the twenty-two-unit building that's currently on one of the Mary Street properties will be a part of the redevelopment process. We have submitted, or actually presented a plan to staff and the Alder for the area as well. And we've also reached out to the neighborhood in a couple of occasions through email, but haven't received a response back. So we have presented a plan again to staff and to the Alder. We certainly would like to develop the property, but changing this zoning will greatly put it at a disadvantage for us to do that. So our properties or the redevelopment, a great portion of the properties will front Winnebago. Again, we're not going to touch the twenty-two-unit building. Actually, what we want to do is create some underground parking to include the twenty-two-unit building. So that's part of the idea. So we just feel that the down- that's part of the, part of the idea. So um we just feel that the downzoning is is a bad precedence to set. Um as you know, the city's going through um bus rapid, rapid transit, um you know, options out there and um housing and density is a part of that. Um so not not displacing those people in the twenty-two unit, we feel um is a, is a great, is a, is a great part of this uh this redevelopment. So I ask that the Alders um accept what the Plan Commission had adopted or had passed. Um so with that, uh thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Robert Proctor of District Four, representing the Realtors Association of South Central Wisconsin, to be followed by Jeremy Mannheim.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Robert Proctor, representing the Realtors Association. We oppose any preemptive downzoning, especially when the zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The owner of the property objects to it and the real sole purpose of it is to reduce density. I think it's very important to recognize that there's no proposal in front of the city right now for it to view this the the request to rezone the property. This is a request done on behalf of the neighbors who oppose having any additional density. Any comments about traffic, parking, size of the building, stormwater runoff, or any other conduct, conditions are completely conjecture and are generally based on the standard negative stigma associated with density and apartments. As was uh talked about by the prior speaker on behalf of the owner, they're actually looking to, it appears to put underground parking in, which may which would include the twenty-two unit building, which means when a plan comes forward, there may be actually reduction in parking on the street and reduction of parking issues, which goes, which is a perfect example why it's a terrible idea to preemptively downzone properties without having anything in front of the city by which you could judge whether any of the stigma or any of the negative statements about what may happen if development comes forward would happen. This would create a very bad precedent. The Plan Commission and the city has revised the zoning ordinance to create additional units as a matter of right under TRU two. And now, as soon as that gets passed, you start seeing a dismantling of those rights without any uh proposal in front of the city. This is about density. This is about simply taking away density without ever seeing what impact that density would have. It's a, it's a, it's a terrible idea. Um the Planning Commission had found that TRU two is consistent with the comprehensive plan as TRU one is. As you Alders know as well or better than anybody else, the comprehensive plan is a broad brush strokes. And so to say one is more consistent than the other, I think is a complete overstatement. So at this point, we would ask, and we think this, that this property is a particularly good example of why it's a bad idea to preemptively downzone property when simply because the neighbors object to the potential addition of density in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jeremy Mannheim of District Six, to be followed by Linda Lenharts.
Uh thank you for listening to me. I'm a Mary Street resident. I'm strongly in favor of the move to change the zoning of two two-two Mary Street to TRU one. I've lived on the East Side for over twenty years. Over the course of those twenty years, I've seen how those pockets of the Near East Side, the Willie Street area that have that rustic feel that where you, you know you're in the city, but you feel you're in the country, those little pockets have become few and far between. Sitting here, the ones I can think of are the Dewey Court Neighborhood off of Wilson and Mary Street. And what I want to press home to you is that Mary Street does this while continuing to be a diverse and affordable neighborhood. The majority of houses on Mary Street are two to three-unit apartments. So that, yes, there are other parts of the city. There are other neighborhoods, a few up on the Ismus or near the Ismus that also have this low density. There are a few neighborhoods that have that serene feel. But their serenity is the high-end serenity, the serenity that comes with the massive price tag. Then the reason that this zoning is so important is what it's doing is it's protecting this neighborhood so that there is a relatively affordable neighborhood that still has that, we'll call it serene, that rustic feel. If this, if we go against this, what we're effectively saying is that that luxury, we'll call it a luxury, that luxury to be able to live in a secluded neighborhood, a quiet neighborhood within walking distance of the Capitol, that's a luxury that only the wealthiest of our wealthy residents can afford. So thank you. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Our next registrant wishing to speak is Linda Lenharts of District Six.
Linda star six. Again, star six to unmute.
Linda, we can't unmute you on the phone. You need to press star six on your phone in order for us to hear you.
I know Linda knows how to do this. Star six, Linda.
But um we had two folks that we skipped, Amira Katabi and Rebecca Parmentier. Are either of them here?
No.
Uh Linda, we're, we'll try one more time. Alright, not hearing Linda, that those are all of the registrants wishing to speak. Are there questions for registrants on item seven? Alder Benford.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Christensen a question, please.
Do we have Randy Christensen still?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, Alder.
Hi, Mr. Christensen. It's uh, well, I can't see, can't see you, but thanks for joining us.
I hear you, Alder Benford.
I, I, I wanna ask you a question. Uh perhaps there was a little bit of confusion uh when we last talked. So uh there's a couple of issues that appears, and correct me if I'm wrong. I guess I want to get your impression. So there's this issue before us tonight, the downzoning, right? And then uh you had mentioned uh future uh possibilities for density. Uh is that right?
Yes, that would be along uh Winnebago Street.
Okay, and uh you had referenced uh plans. Uh while I will concede that I saw the most, and I, I want to say this as strongly as I can, the most conceptual ideals. And uh my recommendation was that you uh, and you said you've been reaching out to Marquette Neighborhood Association, so you, you took that to heart. But uh it appears to me that you've indicated that I support these plans and I just want to make it as clear as I can that uh I said uh I, I do support more housing. I said that the location was really nice, but I, I would appreciate if you didn't uh reference that I support any future plans about the Neighborhood Association and the neighbors uh meeting. So I, I just wanted to clear that up and uh with a question and a comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. I didn't entirely hear a question there, but uh that's alright. Are there any other questions for registrants on item number seven? Seeing none, we'll go on to item number eight, which is creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to rezone uh two twenty-two to two thirty-two East Olin Avenue. Our first registrant is Helen Kitchell of District Thirteen, to be followed by Jeffrey Richter.
I'm here. There's no Helen in the list. Jeff is here.
Alright, Jeffrey Richter uh from Cliff Court, to be followed by Lance McGrath.
Hi, um I'm Jeff Richter and I'm a fourth-generation lifelong Madisonian. Since moving to the diverse south side of Madison in nineteen ninety-five, I've worked to support and improve this community. Much of that work was as a volunteer and leader in the South Metropolitan Planning Council. I worked intensively on the previous South Madison Plan and the plan update just recently completed. My recent work was to make the community aware of the update process and to encourage participation in it. I'm proud of that work, but completely offended and disillusioned by the way pl- planning staff betrayed the people of the south side by adding changes to the South Madison Plan affecting the property at issue after public input process was completed. The changes to the height map made allowance for greater than five-story buildings and supported the pro- proposed changes to zoning being considered today. But planning staff made clear numerous times that the AEC and areas around it were not the subject of the South Madison Plan Update Process. Nevertheless, the changes to the Olin Triangle South Madison Plan were surreptitiously made after public input was closed. The proposed twelve-story tower does not even meet the requirements of the zoning encouraged in the South Madison Plan, but others can address that. The McGrath proposal is also completely contrary to the major desires expressed by the community in the input to the South Madison Plan Update. This project is also offensive because the project is in the midst of five city and county parks. A Plan Commission member even stated that the occupants of this building can use the parks there as their backyard. However, the rest of us and most of the rental owners have to maintain their own yards. Further insulting to the south side community that provided input in the process is the label that we are nimby's and complainers for objecting. You know that if this project were proposed in your district in close proximity to your community's favorite parks and open spaces, that your constituents would be up in arms. But this monstrous project is proposed on the south side. Would you vote approval if this project were to loom over Olbrick, Vilas, or Tenny Park? If not, I ask that you respect the desires of the vast majority of southsiders and send this project back to the drawing board for proposal more in scale with its surroundings and community desires. Calling the process that got us here, planning is a total misnomer. This proposal is the result of scheming and conniving in collusion with a developer not planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Lance McGrath of District Six, to be followed by Janelle Muns.
Uh good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, I have slides if they could be pulled up. Thank you. So uh good evening. I'm Lance McGrath with McGrath Property Group, the developer of the project, and I've got a few slides to go through. Uh but first, I'm gonna start out by saying that this has been a pretty challenging site for us to develop for a lot of different reasons. Uh we came forward with an eighteen-story project last year that eventually stalled at Plan Commission, primarily due to concerns with the proposed demolition of the Wonder Bar and with the height, uh concerns with the proposed height. Since then, we've been working very hard to come up with an alternate design that addresses those concerns and we're really pleased with our end result. The project you're reviewing tonight maintains the Wonder Bar in its current location and creates a new twelve-story mixed-use building that complies with the recently adopted South Madison Plan, while at the same time creating a hundred and ninety-two new homes for Madison residents, along with over thirteen thousand square feet of new commercial space. To date, we've received both initial and final approval from Urban Design with very positive feedback and comments. And last week, we were approved unanimously at Plan Commission. Next slide, please. The location, uh I'm sure you're all aware, but right there in intersection of John Nolan Drive and East Olin Avenue, the site's about an acre and a half in total size. Next slide. The uh nuts and bolts of the project, we're basically creating, taking the existing lot and creating a two-lot certified survey map. One lot will be for the Wonder Bar and the second lot will be for the new project. And the new project's a twelve-story post-tension concrete structure with a hundred and ninety-two apartments and thirteen thousand five hundred square feet of commercial space. Next slide. This is our grade-level uh site plan. You can see the Wonder Bar on the left side of the middle. Um and then all access to the property comes off of East Olin Avenue. The right driveway is a one-way in meant for drop-offs and deliveries, and the main access point is the two-way access on the left. Next slide, please. This is our first residential level. It happens on the fourth floor. The brown-colored area is a community room that opens up on to a fourth-floor community terrace for the residents. And the same footprint repeats itself all the way up twelve stories to the top of the building. And you can see a sawtooth design feature on the right side of the building. Next slide, please. We can skip this one and go to the next also. Gonna quickly walk through our renderings. This is a view of the building on inbound East Washington. Next slide. Go back one, please. That would be outbound John Nolan Drive. Excellent. And this is uh along East Olin Avenue with the Wonder Bar in the foreground. Next slide, please. And this is a close-up of our lobby area. You can see the color, the, the, we have a copper anodized metal panel to the right of the lobby that starts on the outside and then continues into the lobby and creates this relationship with the Wonder Bar that you can see in the background. Next slide. And lastly, this is an elevated view of the project looking towards downtown. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registrant wishing to speak on this item is Janelle Muns of District Thirteen.
There's no one by that name in the list.
Alright. Are there questions for any of our registrants on item eight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item fifty-six, which is authorizing the park superintendent to enter into boat-launch use agreements. Uh and we have a registrant, Travis Cooper from Blue Bill Park Drive.
I do not see a Travis Cooper on the list.
Okay, then we'll go on to item seventy-two, which is approving a certified survey map of property owned by McGrath Property Group at two twenty-two and to two thirty-two East Olin Avenue. Uh we have one registrant wishing to speak, Carrie Rothberg of District Thirteen.
And there's no one by that name in the list.
Alright. Well, that brings us to the end of our public comment. So we will go then to the items excluded from the consent agenda, starting with item four. Again, this is Legisstar six nine five three eight. It's an alternate uh creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning at seven oh-two Ruskin Street. President Furman?
Move adoption.
Second. It's moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff on item four? Alder Abbas.
Thank you very much. A question for Heather Staudter, our attorney has, one of them can answer. So this is a just want a clarity here. So this is a petition. This is a, this need a fifteen votes, correct? Because that happened before we adopt our petition ordinance. And that petition was a couple of months ago.
Director Staudter?
Yes, that, that is correct. This is a fifteen-vote item. Um there is a staff memo in Legisstar on that as well. Yes.
Yes. So Dr. Staudter, uh with this fifteen vote, let's say if we don't get fifteen vote, then this alternate will fail, which mean they will, they will be still that parcel, the whole parcel will be then IL, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And that's what the registrant expressed an interest in this evening.
Okay, okay. So no vote mean this will be, go back to IL as per registrant want, the owner want?
Correct.
Okay, that's good clarification. No further question.
Thank you, Alder. Let me just make sure that everybody understands what you're referencing here. In order to pass the alternate, we need fifteen votes. If the alternate does not pass, we would have the opportunity to come back and make another motion on the original item uh and pass that.
No, I thought if alternate does not pass, then by default, because the default baseline is IL, it will be stay IL. It basically plays some file because the motion here is to change CCT, split the uh zoning into CCT and IL. But correct me if I'm wrong, we don't need any other motion. If it fail, it go back to IL, correct? Director Staudter?
That, that is my understanding. The current zoning of of this particular property, seven oh-two Ruskin, is IL, industrial light. Uh the Plan Commission The Plan Commission recommendation is to rezone a portion of it to CCT and leave the northern portion as IL. I believe if, if a motion to do so were to fail, the council could then do another motion to basically move the original. But the council could also simply let it rest and the property would remain in IL zoning. That, that's my understanding. Perhaps Attorney Haas could weigh in as well.
What was the original?
The original motion was, was to rezone the southern portion of the property to CCT and the northern portion to Conservancy as part of the intended future park. At Plan Commission, the Plan Commission said, "Let's move ahead with the CCT portion of the rezoning, but leave the northern portion as industrial limited since there are active uses there."
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
Alder Bennett, questions?
Yes, this is for Heather. So, I'm from the owner. It seemed like they were unwilling or they didn't want to change the zoning because there's current tenants there, correct? Or am I?
No, that is what I heard them say this evening as well.
Okay. I was wondering, why is that a problem? When wouldn't like legal non-conforming use protect the current tenants from any rezoning that happens?
It, it would, yes. And I think that was acknowledged by the registrant as well. My understanding is that their preference, as of tonight, my understanding is that their preference would be to leave the entire thing as IL and wait for a future date to pursue a different rezoning, consistent with the underlying plan.
Okay, I see. And I guess I'm trying to understand why.
My understanding, again, this is from the testimony. We have not been in touch with, with this registrant recently. But my understanding from what they were saying is that their preference was to have their entire property in one single zoning district, which would be industrial limited, rather than to split the property into two different zoning districts. And I, I can't absolutely speak for the Plan Commission, but I don't think that the Plan Commission would have a huge problem with that as an outcome.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Benford, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Director Staudter, I had a question. During the testimony, there was talk about the possibility that there might be indigenous mounds on the property. And I was wondering, the process, if that is the case, does the city take a different point of view? Do you work to help bring in experts to ensure that that's not the case?
Alder Benford, great question. I think it really pertains to items five and six. It's a different property. And so, that, that will hopefully come up again pursuant to items five and six. But in short, you know, certainly, we, we as staff have reached out to folks and we have Bill Frühling and others here that might be able to, to share some more answers about that pertaining to items five and six.
Thank you. My apologies. That was so startling. I got a little confused here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff on item four? Seeing none, there is a motion to adopt the alter, Alder Abbas? Sorry, discussion?
I have a discussion, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. I will encourage all my colleagues to just vote no to this alternative, which will by default put this agenda item into IL zoning as per desired by the owner of the building. I had a discussion with the owner. I also discussed with the city staff as well. And I think so, as Director Staudter mentioned, the Plan Commission would not have any issue with that. I think so. I was at Plan Commission meeting. Plan Commission was trying to find, and I respect their decision, a compromise. So, that's why they split the parcel into IL and CCT. However, I think so the, the best policy could be leaving it as it is. And in future, I'm very much sure when rest of the Oscar Meyer will develop, this area will come to, come back to us as a whole parcel. And then, we will have a better opportunity to see a better dense populated project or CCT as per the plan recommendation of Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan. And that could be a better time to, you know, rezoning rather than splitting this parcel into northern parcel into half, like IL and southern into CCT. Just, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I think, I agree with the owner. And as Alder too, I think so that that makes a lot of sense. But the owner is asking, so living entities actually provide them opportunity in future to bring the project. And at that point, we can see what project come in front of us and we can rezone. So, I will encourage to just vote no to it, which will automatically put this on, place on file. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, discussion?
Yes, and Mayor Sazi, you could probably tell me if this is in order or not. But it seems like, given the circumstances we had, it seems like the motion should be instead to place on file without prejudice. Because, I don't know, the zoning seems up in the air and I can understand if the owner doesn't want to change the zoning of the entire parcel. But because it's up in the air, maybe we should just like place it on file if they want to bring it back if they can, or not. And that would give more leeway in the future. So, is, is that an amenable or friendly amendment or?
I'll remind us all collectively, there's no such thing as a friendly amendment. I think functionally, there's no difference. And I'll invite Attorney Haas to interrupt me if I'm wrong. I think functionally, there's no difference between a motion, approving a motion to place on file or voting no on the motion to adopt. So, I don't think there's a, I don't think the outcome is, is different in any way, Alder.
Okay, I see.
Thank you, Alder. President Furman?
I'm going to move a motion to place on file without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. The, the motion before us now is to place on file without prejudice. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of placing on file without prejudice? Seeing no objection, that item is placed on file without prejudice. That will bring us to items five and six. Is there objection to taking items in five and six together? Seeing no objection, I'd like to start with having Director Staudter just orient us to the issues here, and then we'll go into questions. Director Staudter?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. And ironically, there's a train going by that you may hear in the, in the background here. I'm going to keep this very brief. I want to first thank colleagues who have worked hard on this issue as well, along with, along with the Alder, Alder Abbas, who brought forth the substitute. Tonight, we also have Bill Frühling, a principal planner in the Planning Division, Chris Pedikowski, principal engineer, and Yang Tao, traffic engineer. Should you have questions that pertain to any of them, I may ask them to pipe in later. I will very briefly provide an overview, mostly just to set the table and provide clarity on what the council's seeing this evening, especially pertaining to items five and six, which are very closely related. So, as, as many of you know, a few of you were directly involved in the adoption of the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan nearly two years ago. This is a look at the entire plan area here on the right. Importantly, the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan is a rare one for the city. It's taking an area that exists as one thing today and carefully planning for a complete evolution of that area to accommodate, in this case, hundreds and hundreds of units, eventually of new housing, commercial employment options as well, from what today is a predominantly industrial area. The area that we really are focused on tonight with items five and six is shown here. It's about a 29-acre site, formerly the Hartmeyer property. And here it is a little closer up. Again, you can tell just from the aerial, today we have a lot of open space in this area that's zoned industrial. And obviously, the industrial use of the former Oscar Meyer facility here. The adopted plan shows a new street network and a mix of uses, medium and high-density residential uses, and the purple is, is mixed use there for the future. I think that when we, when we think about implementing these plans, we have a few tools at our disposal as a city that we use very carefully and sparingly to really take the first steps towards plan implementation. And we're going to talk about especially official mapping just a little bit more this evening. But I want you to take a look at the, the fine-grained street network that we've shown here in the adopted plan. And really want to stress that when we take the step of official mapping, which really lays out the city's intentions for future street right-of-ways in the, in the future, we only look at the very highest priority critical connections. We don't try to map out generally the entire grid that could, could one day occur. Most of those decisions are made through individual development and redevelopment decisions. But we, we have recent, in recent years, taken steps to, to really lay out the city's intentions with the most critical street connections that can really bring a plan to fruition over the coming decades. So, what's before you tonight? Again, just a couple more slides here. But I want to show how closely related items five and six are. So, on the left here, this is the, the palette, if you will, of rezonings, really pursuant to item five. And in this area here, you've just dealt with item four. So, if I could wave a magic wand, this would all be showing as gray right now. Still zoned IL based on your action just a moment ago. But the remainder of the site would be zoned Conservancy, CN, high-density residential, traditional residential, urban two in the brown, and regional mixed use in the purple. So, that's what you see on the left. And this is the original. Actually, this is the first substitute of the rezoning that goes right along with the original alignment here on the right of the officially mapped key north, south, and east-west streets. And so, this is the alignment that's, that's consistent with the adopted plan and really illustrates the original proposal that had been sponsored by, by Alder Abbas. Importantly, this version, both the rezoning and the accompanying official mapping, had been originally recommended by the TPPB and Plan Commission back in February and March. And then, again, by the TPPB in early June, when we took the, the substitute back to them to, to look at the two alternatives and make a decision. This slide here shows both the rezonings and the official mapping, really encapsulated by the, the substitute, which is the latest proposed by Alder Abbas. And, you know, you've heard a lot of testimony about, you know, about why this is fine, better. I think that, I just want to stress that the staff recommendation really came from a careful inter-agency review of, again, the original versus the substitute. And really, which street alignment could put the city in the best position to get a future rail crossing relocated to, to this area? That was really one of the more critical issues. And again, colleagues from engineering and traffic engineering may want to take questions on that this evening, if there, if there are any questions. This substitute was recommended by the City's Plan Commission just last week, on June 13th. And you heard from a commissioner this evening. I think there was a very robust discussion by the Plan Commission. And ultimately, when they were weighing the trade-offs, they really saw that, that this version, the substitute, along with the accompanying rezoning, was really adequate to move us that much closer toward plan implementation. And I think we all share a lot of excitement about the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan moving forward. And in any case, this is a really important next step toward the, the implementation of that plan and its critical multimodal connections for both existing residents on either side of the area and especially for new residents who will be living right in this area. As you heard this evening, the potential developer, who still has, you know, many steps ahead of them, urgently needs council action this evening in order to basically have the foundation in the future street layout so that they can move forward with those next steps and move toward what would be the submittal of a development or land use application that will be reviewed by the City's Plan Commission in the coming months. So, that's where I will leave it today. And I'm happy to take any questions as are colleagues from other agencies. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Let's do questions for staff and then we'll get a motion. Are there questions for staff on, on either items five or six? Alder Benford now.
I don't know if it's the heat, Mayor, or just feeling a little fired up from the testimony. So, Heather, you, or Director Staudter, I think you know the question.
Yeah, with regard to potential archaeological sites, I'm going to look to my colleague Bill Frühling, who was closest to those conversations when staff absolutely followed up on them to, to get a better sense of what might be on the, the site today. And, you know, absolutely, we want to take the greatest care in the planning process, in this implementation step, and later, if and when streets and buildings are actually constructed on the site. So, I'll turn it over to Bill.
Sure. Thank you. And so, so this is certainly not news to us. Staff, when we, you know, when we prepare a plan such as the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan, we do research and analysis on all kinds of different aspects of the site to inform our planning. And so, so we sought clarification on this issue, at least going back to 2019, if not earlier, from the State of Wisconsin Historical Society. And, you know, and more recently, we got a sort of clarification on this matter because it keeps coming up. We want to make sure that we're recommending the right thing in this area based on the information that we have available to us. So, there, there's a joint staff memo that was prepared by Planning, Parks, Engineering, and Traffic Engineering that was dated June 3rd. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but it hits on some of those kind of commonly recurring topics, including this one. And in there, there's a, a quote from an email that we got from James Kibbo, who is the state archaeologist. And, you know, he said that there would be no compliance-related archaeological investigation required. And, you know, he wasn't sure about the, you know, about the mound that was, was referenced there. And he said, you know, a, a survey, an archaeological survey of the area could help provide more information. And I'm sure that, that they would like to see that. And, you know, we want to do the right thing too. But I think it's important to note that, that either the original or the alternative stay a fair distance away from that, that site that's being talked about. And, you know, the original alignment is at least 100 feet away from the perimeter of that area. And, you know, this, this is something, there are archaeological sites all over this area and all across the city. So, this is, this is something I would say that staff is very accustomed to dealing with, particularly the Engineering Division. And I think Chris Pedikowski is, is also on this call from Engineering. And so, he may be able to answer more specific questions about, you know, how, how engineering deals with the archaeological investigations when they're, they're installing streets and other infrastructure. So, I hope that's helpful.
That was very helpful, Bill. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff on items five and six? Seeing none, then, President Furman, let's get a motion on both items.
Thank you, Mayor. Move adoption of Legistar File 69517, second substitute. And move adoption of Legislative File Number 69519, substitute.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt both items. Is there discussion? Alder Abbas?
Yeah, thank you so much. First of all, I really appreciate the planning staff. It was a long, long process, many years of process, so many public meetings. We conducted so many neighborhood meeting, in-person meetings, phone calls, emails. And also... And also really appreciate developer and as well as planning staff together working on official mapping. I know when the last time it came to common council, I referred it, which increased more workload for our planning staff. And creating a substitute official mapping take a lot of heavy lift from all the staff member, not only planning. So I really want to acknowledge their hard work and working with me and other stakeholders to create the plan which could really help the city with their housing target and environmental target. So this particular project, as we heard from many participants and public testimony, I will not repeat it. I think so, as Commissioner Fernandez, Tony Fernandez mentioned, it it gives us the best opportunity, it's the best path forward. It also give us 15 acreage of expansion of the parkland or I will say open space and wetland, which is extremely important during this climate emergency. And not, and it's important for me to mention the watershed study, which was released last year or earlier this year, I don't remember. I remember reading the whole, I don't remember when it got released, but that study is done on East Smith area, and this property is part of that study. And the some of the, some of going back into some of the reasoning about flooding, one of the, one of the major finding was that East Smith and much of the Madison was built on wetland area. And this particular property have active wetland, and I think so. Protecting wetland and ecological system upland is important. But more importantly, at the same time, providing enough space to future resident. This substitute, I I did not take this substitute because I was already sponsored on previous one. But this substitute I did after hearing from the neighbors and as well as thinking about how we can increase our housing stock. And this substitute provide us a very clear path to increase affordable housing, which much, much needed at this moment. If we go with the original one, we're gonna lose 80 unit plus. We have a chance, probably whole project, go down south. And we won't get this $150 million investment on the north side, which is much, much needed. So I will highly encourage to support this, both substitutes, so we can get much needed housing as well as environmental advantages to this project. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion on items five and six? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt both items. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of items five and six. And that will take us to item number seven, which is Legistar 71221, creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to rezone 222 and 230 Mary Street. President Furman, let's start with a motion, please.
Move place on file without prejudice.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. And we do have attorney Kate Smith here. If any of you have questions about down zoning and the implications thereof. Obviously, we have planning staff as well. Are there any questions for staff on item seven? Seeing none, is there discussion on item seven? Alder Benford?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. It's it's really weird that this items come up because you probably remember this was the hot topic at our very first common council meeting together. It seems like years ago now. So this issue was, you know, it was what all of us knew rookie all. There's the big issue that we were faced with. And, you know, at that time, I remember one of my concerns was how would neighbors lose their voices about how their neighborhoods might be changed? And, you know, during that conversation, I think it was maybe like drilled into my heart, if I hadn't known it already, is that whether we like it or not, Mayor, we all know that change is inevitable sometimes. But, you know, at that meeting, I can't escape still hearing those voices of those that live on Mary Street, that live in the apartment that we're talking about. And these folks who express real concerns, not NIMBYism, but real concerns. And many other people who spoke at our very first council meeting. And and once again, I remember it because some of these people I know, many of these folks, they talked about affordable rents in a neighborhood that I can tell you, if you don't already know, rents have been skyrocketing for, seems like over the last decade or so over here. So I realize that, you know, a lot of the tenants that live in the building, that ultimately it's up to Apex to do what they want with those rents and things. But it is kind of a unusual situation over here in my district. So many of those folks also who spoke at our very first council meeting together, they voiced, they they voiced their sincere fears about their own homes. And these are beautiful homes. And I think one of the speakers said, these aren't, you know, million dollar mansions or anything like that, but they're beautiful homes. And in some cases, for generations, these homes have offered the foundation for their lives. Many people who bought homes on this small, beautiful tree-lined street that dead ends, they had to scrap and do all they can to afford to buy that house and to stay in that house. So, you know, that very first night that we were together because of our actions, the majority of us voted to amend the zoning that would allow for more than currently is there. So throughout our conversation last April, this site was spotlighted because of all the people who came out, many of the letters that you received over the last few days from a lot of folks that live in that area. They came out and it was spotlighted because what could happen in the future on that site? So as we were talking about amending the zoning code, there was concerns. And this site kind of became the poster site for what could possibly happen. And, you know, as the council, I understand that we have to look at the city overall, not this beautiful one block area. So we made our decision at that time. So I gotta be super transparent, Mayor, that this resolution was my attempt to reassure the neighbors. I wanted to assure them that they could have future peace. Many, once again, who have written us and talked about what that street means to them. I wanted to protect their future sanctity. But more, I don't know if it's more important, but in my mind, I think it's worth mentioning that I wanted to ensure that we, as the common councils, the city of Madison, would be good stewards of land and the Yahar River, which the site runs right next to. And I don't have to tell you that with our climate tragedies that we're facing and future flooding events, I think that there's a real concern that what would happen if that site was redeveloped and what was big. I should also mention on this small, beautiful street, there is a co-op right next door. And in my mind, I think about even a a couple feet taller, they lose their sunshine. So this does have real impacts. So, you know, I had mentioned earlier that I I took a little bit of offense and during questioning and answering that if there was implied that I had a supportive future plans, I will always have support of neighborhood input. I will always have of support of people getting together to talk about this. And I said before, I understand the need for more housing units, especially with the population I work with outside of being an alder. So what I saw at that point was, once again, the most conceptual of plans about any detail. So as that gets worked out in the future, I'll look forward to that. So I want to ask you all that you support this, even though I I don't have issue with the Planning Commission putting this on file. And I understand we can't have a a cookie cutter approach or just pick and choose what areas we want to downzone. But you all, as we started, we had so much uncertainty that first meeting, so much uncertainty about a lot of things, and especially this, the amendment, what the zoning change. So I want to assure you all that this step will offer these folks the future peace that they deserve. And once again, any future development and things that, in my mind, is a separate issue at this point. I heard the developers said that they're all linked together. But in earlier conversations, that's not the impression that I got. So I would please ask you to support this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett? Alder Bennett, you're muted. Oh.
I I I've muted too.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on item seven? If not, the current motion is to place on file without prejudice. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of placing on file without prejudice? Alder Benford?
Please record me as no.
We'll record Alder Benford as a no vote. Is there objection to otherwise recording I votes? Alder Tischler?
Record me as no as well.
We'll record two no votes. Seeing no further, we'll record two votes, two no votes in the balance as I, in which case the item passes. And that will take us to item eight. Is there any objection to taking up items eight and 72 together? Seeing none, let's get a motion then on items eight and 72. President Furman?
Move adoption with conditions for Legislative File 71222 and move approval with conditions for item 72. And I do not have the Legistar number, unfortunately, sorry. Legislative item 70781. Sorry about that.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve both items. And are there questions for staff on this item, or these two items? Or, excuse me, Director Stoudt, can you just clarify what item eight is doing versus what item 72 is doing?
Yes, absolutely. Item eight is rezoning the property to the traditional employment district in order to accommodate the proposed new building, the 12-story, 192-unit building. And then item 72 is simply a certified survey map. And in Wisconsin, a certified survey map can be used to divide a property into up to four new lots. In this case, the developer is dividing off the property right underneath the Wonder Bar, which many of you remember when this came before the the Plan Commissioner Council before. So the property is being divided from one larger property into two lots. One of the lots simply is the property underneath the Wonder Bar itself so that moving forward legally, they will be two separate properties along Olin Avenue.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Seeing none, is there discussion? Alder Vediver?
Sorry, I'm still questions.
Go ahead.
So my question is just, could somebody orient me to what is the nearest building that is of this height that to this proposed site?
Sure, I think that the nearest building would probably be downtown, in the the downtown area. I don't have the exact nearest building, but this is an area where the recently adopted South Madison Plan recommends up to 12 stories in height for this subarea. There's nothing at that height today in in this area. So I'm just going to guess generally, the the nearest 12-story building is going to be downtown, just to the north.
So it would look discordant with the area, at least at the moment?
This building will be taller than anything around it, yep, as was recommended in the adopted plan. I I will say that in the future, the city may see development at a similar scale on the Alliant Energy Site at some point in the future, nothing imminent there, certainly. But that will be another area just to the south of of Olin that could develop at a very high level of intensity in the future.
Alder Bennett, questions?
Yes, and to that point of further density in the south side, I'm wondering if Director Stoudt, if you could remind our council of why such density was adopted in the South Madison Plan and specifically why it's needed in the south side?
Sure. Well, I I I think in general, we know that growth is happening citywide and that the south side will be accommodating a lot of future growth. One of the interesting things about this site is that it's located in a way that it's off of South Park Street, which was definitely the emphasis of the South Madison Plan. And yet, it's a site that due to its proximity to downtown, connections to parks, bike, bike routes, et cetera, it's really well-located for this type of intensity. And so, you know, I I think we're looking for areas in the city that are well-served by transit, parks and other amenities that make great places to live and currently are just missing the the housing and and the people to to live there. This property is a really great site for that, given its its connections to amenities. And I think has has a lot of, a lot of great opportunity just immediately adjacent to this site, as well as on the Alliant Energy Center campus that I mentioned earlier.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. And I'm also wondering, I know we can't base our decision off of like affordability and stuff, but I'm wondering how this site, how this, how adopting this might contribute to increase affordability in the south side?
Well, I think, you know, a lot of, a lot of you have really strong knowledge and opinions about the provision of market rate housing and what that might do to housing costs in general in Madison. Most of us, I think, are on the same page that we need more housing at all levels of affordability of all types in the city of Madison to to basically accommodate the growth that we're experiencing and have already experienced. This particular, this particular development is a market rate project. And I think that that can provide more housing for our growing population of folks that that can afford market rate housing so that they, in turn, don't put that downward pressure on the market and seek housing opportunities that are less expensive. And, you know, it's a, it's a really abstract concept. I know it's one that's highly politicized, but that's, that's a good answer for this evening. Again, we need housing at all price points in all parts of the city. And this is a great location, well-served by transit and other amenities.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Abbas, questions?
Thank you so much. Director Stoudt, really quick. So what is happening with the Wonder Bar? Why that location is still there?
So the Wonder Bar is owned by the same developer, McGrath. And in previous iterations, the Wonder Bar was going to be actually relocated either to another property, which, you know, the the developer was unable to really secure, or just onsite to another portion of the property. In this iteration of the development proposal, the Wonder Bar is staying in its exact same spot that it's in today, which is is much easier than moving a very, very old and fairly large building. So it is remaining where it is today. And the the proposed new 12-story building is being constructed just to the east of it.
Yeah, so so Wonder Bar is not a historical building or anything under the ordinance.
Correct, correct.
And it also is on the similar height for future development?
The Wonder Bar is is zone, I think it is in the same TE, Traditional Employment District, but it's anticipated to stay. The developer has has said that they intend to keep the Wonder Bar here. I think if they didn't, you wouldn't be seeing this third iteration of the proposal before you this evening. Down the road, we may see interest in actually applying a landmarks nomination to the Wonder Bar, but that's certainly not before the council this evening. And there's no formal step that's been taken yet by the property owner or anyone else yet to designate that building as a local landmark.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, questions?
No questions. I was just going to talk to the motion.
I think we might have one more question, Alder. I'll come right back to you. Alder Foster, did you have questions?
Yeah, just one quick question for Heather in terms
Yeah, just one quick question for, um, Heather. In terms of the recommendation to change it to TE zoning, um, can you just share kind of the rationale behind that? Seems like everybody's talking about residential use. Um, but what was the thinking behind that?
Yeah, great question. I think that, that when the developer first came forward with a previous iteration of this proposal, um, the South Madison Plan had not been adopted yet. And so we were really leaning on the Conference of Plan Recommendation for Employment Uses at the site. At that time, the developer was working with the Traditional Employment or TE District as the district to zone into. It, it has a lot of the same elements, um, with regard to usable open space, allowable density, et cetera, as our regional mixed-use or RMX district. Um, we as staff think that either district can be appropriate to accommodate, uh, what's being proposed here. I'll tell you, um, just as a point of reference, that a lot of the buildings that are, uh, have been constructed over the past decade on East Washington in the Capital East District are zoned Traditional Employment or TE as well. And so it's really similar in many ways to, uh, to those buildings, those ten-to-fourteen-story mixed-use buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any further questions, Alder Tischler?
Yes, I guess my question is with the adoption of this, is there any, is there any risk that the Wonder Bar would be torn down? Or?
Great, great question. Um, so no. The Wonder Bar, in order to demolish the Wonder Bar, uh, we would need a separate approval from the city's Plan Commission. Um, uh, that is absolutely not the intent of, of the developer in that they've, they've changed the proposal multiple times, um, and now it's before you would, would retain the Wonder Bar, um, in its current location on the site. But, you know, just, just to be sure, the, the Plan Commission would need to, to weigh in and approve any future demolition of that building.
Right. Any further questions? If not, then Alder Carter, discussion?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanna say that, um, we had an, an Alder Evers, ever, sorry, Evers, sorry, Evers. Um, I'll move on. Uh, I just wanna say that we had multiple meetings regarding this development. And, um, if, if you recall, when the Wonder Bar was gonna be demolished, um, it created quite an uproar, uh, not only in our public, um, engagement, but also in the newspaper. The developer went from eighteen stories, as you all know, down to twelve stories. And I think at this particular spot at John Nolan and, and, um, Olin Avenue, he, you know, we're not tearing down, uh, buildings, houses, et cetera, to build this apartment building. But it is, uh, another gateway, and I think it's appropriate for this size building. And I think it's appropriate as you go closer to the neighborhood to have lower, um, uh, developments like a five-story, four-story building in that area. The Wonder Bar, um, and we all have our Jeffy Trail. Um, the Wonder Bar is my second Jeffy Trail. So let me just say that the Wonder Bar will probably stay there. It might be a coffee shop, it might be a restaurant, it might be an office, but knock on twenty logs that it is going to be there for a, a, a lifetime, another lifetime. I would hope that you will support this. I think this is a good addition, um, to John Nolan. And I think you're gonna see some other developments on John Nolan that might, um, really make that gateway, um, as impressive, not as tall, but as impressive as East Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Alder Foster?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I will be supporting this. I just wanted to mention that I'm, uh, the, the TE zoning, um, it's a little bit of a, a weird one. And in particular, things like general retail, restaurants, taverns are all conditional uses. We're in, um, a lot of similar districts that we might imagine this could be zoned to, those would be permitted uses. Um, so it's likely just gonna be extra hurdles and hoops for future businesses um, to jump through. Um, I'll, I'll still vote in support of this. Um, and perhaps we just need to look at our, our TE zoning district and, um, see if there aren't some tweaks to be made there. But I just, I, I wanted to put it out there that I, I think, um, we're probably just creating some obstacles for future businesses that we may not be intending to with, with this, uh, process.
Thank you, Alder. There's further discussion on items eight and seventy-two. Seeing none, the motion is to adopt eight with conditions and to adopt seventy-two. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of both? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of both items. And that will take us to item fourteen. President Furman?
Um, Aldo Rehilly has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Aldo Rehilly?
May we have a ten-minute break?
Aldo Rehilly, he will move a ten-minute recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, moved in seconded for a ten-minute recess. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, will be recessed for ten minutes. That brings us back at nine sixteen PM.
Thank you.
All right, we are back in just a few seconds. If Alders could come back and turn their cameras back on, please. And I will ask you to call the roll slowly. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Curry?
Here.
Evers?
Here.
Figaroa Cole?
Here.
Foster?
Present.
Furman?
Present.
Halverson?
Present.
Harrington McKinney?
Here.
Heck?
Here.
Miazze?
Present.
Paulson is excused. Fair?
Here.
Tischler? Tischler? Alder Vervier?
Here.
Vidiver?
Present.
Wajalia?
Here.
Abbas?
Here.
Benford?
Present.
Bennett?
Here.
Carter? Madam Mayor, we have quorum. We're missing two, though.
All right, thank you. We'll keep our eyes on the camera situation. And see if we can get our colleagues back. And all right, so that we are on item fourteen, which is Legis 72147, Submitting Resident Committee Appointments. President Furman, a motion, please.
Move confirmation.
Second.
Moved in second to confirm Alder Harrington McKinney. You asked for separation on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just want to be clear. It is not that I'm questioning the appointments. I'm just asking you to share with the process. I have received some questions. I've been trying to encourage more participation by residents. And it would be helpful if you could articulate what that process of selection of resident appointees would be. Again, I'm not, that's exactly why I separated that for the process, to go and record. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I'd be happy to speak to the process. And as I think you and your colleagues know, but perhaps not everyone in the public does, we have approximately a hundred committees, which means that we have somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand resident appointments. And that are, most of them made by the mayor and confirmed by the council. So we have a pretty robust process by which people can apply to be on, frankly, any one of our committees. And that application will come into my office. We keep those applications on file until there's an opening on the committee that somebody applied for. And at which time, we would pull those applications. And I would ask staff to review them, perhaps to talk to folks. And then to make a recommendation to me. I would say the vast majority of the time, I accept staff recommendations and make those appointments. There are some appointments that I'm a little bit more involved in, or it might be my deputy mayors that are calling folks. And often, we are in the position of needing to recruit for vacancies. And so this is a great opportunity for me to remind you all that we do often need to recruit for vacancies. So if there are vacancies on any of the bodies on which you serve, I would very much welcome your help in filling those vacancies. And also, I'm always interested in if one of your constituents has applied in hearing from you, what you think of their application, and whether or not you would recommend them for a particular body. And but the short version for folks in the public is that you can, via the city's website, submit your application to serve on a committee. We asked you to suggest three that you'd be interested in. And those applications will stay on file until there are vacancies, at which point, we would consider everyone who's applied for those vacancies. And with input from the staff who staffed that committee most closely, would make a decision about appointments. Alder, does that speak to your question?
Thank you, Ald. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. All right, on item fourteen, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item fourteen. And that will bring us to item sixteen. President Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. Move confirmation with the following conditions. Public health, Madison, Dane County, and CDC recommendations for gatherings with optional masks, but recommended for everyone if Dane County's COVID-19 community level is medium and required if we're at high. Alders will be seated in their normal seats. Some seats won't be available in the public gallery, and we would have one overflow room.
Second.
Moved in seconded. President Furman, do us just speak to the motion?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. We had long discussions and CCEC this month to talk about different policy questions related to hybrid. I've sent out summaries of that to Alders. The presentations are posted online, both in the recorded format as well as the PowerPoints. I think we've, we've come to a good understanding in that group of what hybrid meetings would look like, which would be encouraging as many Alders to attend in person as possible, allowing for the public and staff to participate virtually or in person. A lot more details, part of CCEC legislative items. But I think one of the big questions was related to the COVID-19 protocols. And after having public health at our last CCEC meeting, we thought, I thought it was most appropriate to make a motion that we follow the recommendations that are available as it pertains to keeping safe with COVID-19. And that's why I made the motion today with those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's go back and see if there are questions for staff, Alder Carter?
Yes, I have a question for staff. Is Janelle with us?
Yes, Director Heinrich is here.
Okay. My question to you, Director, is, at one point, there was a protocol of being at least six feet or so distance. Is that still a protocol that we're using? And I ask that because many employment centers are still using that protocol.
Alder, that's been a general rule of thumb to layer in with other, and emerged early on, I think, with the advancement and the widespread availability of vaccine, that six-foot marker is not as strict as layering in as many other non-pharmaceutical interventions as you possibly can in a space, which includes assuring that folks are vaccinated, requesting that, and up to date on their boosters, making masks available, and so on.
Okay, so, and we, and we do know, even with all of that, you can still somehow COVID find you. Correct?
We are not in our zero-risk environment with COVID. That is, that is accurate, Alder.
Okay. My next question is, is this too? Well, I'll wait, because I have a question for President Furman when we get to discussion. So I'll wait for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wajali, questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, is the technology individuals here? Who can answer about the technological aspect of this?
Yes, Director Edgerton is here.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Director Sarah, could you please walk us through the hybrid process in terms of who can attend in person, who can attend in virtual, whether it's the constituents, the Alders, or the staff? So how are all these things managed?
So Alder Wajali, that's a good question. Really, for a hybrid meeting, if anybody is virtual and anybody is in person, it's a hybrid meeting. So if there is some council staff that are virtual, that's a hybrid meeting. If you have council staff that are in the City-City County Building in Room 201. If you have a staff participating from home and council is in Room 201, that's a hybrid. If you have participants participating both in person and virtually, that's a hybrid meeting.
And I, as per the memo that went out, there will be a mock meeting. And is the hybrid still up to date, that it can be able to take on for this coming first week of July?
Yep. Our timeline is the same as it was when we sent out that memo. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
There are other questions for staff on this item? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there a notification process? I don't know if that will go to Sarah, if that would go to the President. Is there a required notification process, whether you are going to be hybrid or in person?
Mayor, I'd be, yeah, Mayor, I'd be happy to take that. At the Common Council Executive Committee, we've decided, we were very focused on our policy for at least the first meeting or the first two meetings. And I forgot to mention, I think the goal is to actually figure out what we learn from those meetings and iterate and fix things and possibly change things. We are not asking at this time for notification. We just would ask that our chair not have to guess that before a meeting starts. So we're not requiring any sort of notification. We're not requiring at this time for a certain amount of people to be there in person. But for, in the interest of making sure that the, our chair and clerk are not trying to figure out, are we waiting for somebody to show up in person or dial in from home? We would, we would like that, a notification. But, but as of now, there is no, you know, strict deadline where you have to do it two weeks before the meeting or the day before or anything like that. I think we'll talk about how it works out and decide and make recommendations from CCEC. And then the council would decide if we wanted to implement any policies based on our experience.
Thank you, President Furman. I want to go back to Alder Wajali's question as well. And because, while Sarah answered it in theory, I think, Alder, you were asking a little bit more about in practice. And so just to be clear, in order for us to implement a hybrid council meeting, it will require myself, council leadership, and the clerk, at a minimum, to be in person. I think it's also likely that the city attorney will be in person, that the council chief of staff will be in person. We'll need some council staff there to assist any members of the public that want to be there in person. We'll also need staff, if we're going to have an overflow room, we'll need someone to staff that. And so there will be a number of folks that, that will be required in a hybrid meeting to be in person. And that's part of why I would ask that you all do your best to be in person as well. And so that it's not me and the clerk up there on the dais by ourselves. And which doesn't really sound like fun. And so I, I think, you know, practically, that's what we're looking at. I know there's also been some conversation about whether management team and city staff will need to be in person or not. And I spoke to them this morning and let folks know that I would support them being in person if they wish, but also would support them watching, for example, from their office and coming down to chambers just for the item that's relevant to them. And or if they wished to remain virtual and handle questions or presentations virtually. And I do think that it'll be a better experience for everyone if staff presentations can be done in person. So I encourage staff to do that. But at least for these first couple of meetings, I think we're not going to ask staff to all be in the room. And we're going to ask them to make the decision that's best for the items that are on the agenda. Alder Abbas, questions?
Yeah, I think so. Most of my questions are addressed by you. I have one small question regarding Alders being in the room on virtual. Did we make any motion? I don't remember anything. CC, make any decision on, CCEC, any decision on? How many Alders can be in the room? How many not? Is there any, any official motion happened?
President Furman, do you want to speak to that?
Absolutely. And so at this time, we're not limiting the amount of Alders. And we're not requiring, we're not requiring, we don't have a minimum or maximum amount of Alders. If all Alders showed up, all twenty, that's absolutely fine. And obviously, so I will say the preference at CCEC was for as many Alders to be there as possible. Certainly being encouraged, encouraging Alders to be in person with not being there to, to be a rare exception.
So President Furman, up to you if you want to answer that question or not. What was the rationale? Why not we make it? I won't say compulsory in person for Alders, but at least all Alders should be in person unless somebody's sick because of COVID and they can use hybrid. But why we did not take that direction, why we leave it up to Alders to decide how many want to be in the room, as the mayor mentioned? I have, I'm curious.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I definitely would like as many Alders to be there. I will say there is no way for us to enforce that. There, there's no way for us to mandate people to be in person as long as the hybrid option is available. I think, you know, there was discussion on possibly changing the ordinance and making a quorum related to having a certain amount of people in person. And that just ended up becoming a pretty difficult thing to figure out early on. And it wasn't clear whether or not that was necessary. So I think, you know, the, the goal is to play it by ear and see. Is to, one, encourage Alders, please, please come. You know, please, as Alder Abbas suggested, use virtual as, you know, last resort because you're not feeling well or something, you know, extraordinary came up. Not just because I, you know, Keith is having a bad hair day and he doesn't want to, want to leave the house. But I think, you know, I think, I think we can certainly talk in the future about, you know, codifying stuff. But I think we just need to remember, you know, our ability to enforce that is, is pretty low.
I, okay, thank you, President Furman. I have a question for Tony Haas.
Go ahead, Alder.
Yeah, Tony Haas, as CCEC did not make any motion about number of Alders can be in the room or not in the room. I'm just curious from an ordinance standpoint. When we go in a hybrid of existing ordinance, one, the quorum, I'm curious how we came across this conclusion. Some will be virtual and some will be in, in person. Why we could all not be in person? I'm curious from an ordinance standpoint, legal description made, we are with that particular situation on hand.
Sure. Well, it's a little bit of uncharted territory because of, you know, having a hybrid meetings, the rules aren't really spelled out specifically. Of course, quorum is fourteen members. And the council, if the council, you know, wants to make certain rules as a condition of meeting virtually, I think it can. But the current ordinance simply says that fourteen members need to be in attendance. And so unless you change that, if you are allowing attendance virtually, those Alders will count towards a quorum.
So my question to you is, so let's say if I propose a motion as council motion to make it all Alder mandatory to come in person, unless there's a sickness and family issue to be virtual, would that have any legal obstacle? Will that give us that power to be in the same room?
If, I, I think you could pass a motion that hybrid meetings would still require Alders to attend in person. And if they do not, you're not, you're not going to accommodate virtual attendance. They would be marked as absent if they don't attend in person. I will, you know, this is maybe not a legal point, but, you know, I would compare the, you know, considering what the reason for the virtual attendance, that might be difficult to police. You know, I would compare to when the state used to have absentee voting only for specific reasons. And all we found out was that was forcing voters to come up with an excuse that fit the statute. And if you're going to try to specify, you know, it's okay for childcare, it's okay for family illness, I think those are going to be pretty hard lines to draw and to, you know, to make a judgment about whether one reason is more adequate than another. If you're out of town on business or vacation. I just think that might be a practical problem, but I, I think it's within the power of the council to, to do either of those.
Okay, that, that's extremely helpful. I appreciate that advice. Thanks. No further question. And Madam Mayor, I will, I will do motion when we go in that moment. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, questions? You're muted, Alder.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to, okay, is this the time when I can ask Alder Furman a question or?
Yeah, I think, I think you could. Yes, that would be fine.
Okay. Did you, Alder Furman, the President Furman, did you look at any distancing between Alders in the chambers? Because, you know, it's, it's less than twelve feet, I mean, twelve inches between us. And I'm just thinking of anyone who has underlying medical issues.
Thank you, Alder Carter, for the question. I, you know, I think we certainly talked about it. As we heard, you know, the current recommendations don't necessarily mandate that. I think there was, there's concerns about the technology in the room and the ability to do a lot more spacing. And then looking at what Dane County is doing with their spacing, that's why I decided to make the motion I made this evening, was technology concerns as well as looking at the recommendations of, of public health in the CDC and what Dane County was doing. I would also note, I mean, I think, you know, masks are going to do, if, you know, people are concerned, masks are going to do a good job of protecting people. So that's why that is the recommendation of people wearing masks. I will tell you personally, I will be wearing a mask. I still go into meetings all the time at CCB. You'll know from seeing me at one of the outdoor events. I'm even wearing masks in crowded outdoor events as well. That's a way that I'm protecting myself and my family. So, you know, I think based on all the different other things that are put in place, that, that's why I made the recommendation I made. But people are certainly willing to, or certainly able to make other recommendations.
And can you expound on what Dane County's doing? I don't think everyone knows what they're doing.
I'm sure. So the, it was, it's my understanding from what was provided. See if I can open up the message that I shared with Alders. And I know it's also, it was part of the presentation that was given at CCEC and also forwarded to Alders. When they had their in-person meeting, When they had their in-person meeting, they had approximately eight feet long tables and they were spreading seats apart about three to four feet. I don't know what the exact measurements are in in C C B room 201. But but, I mean, it it is a pretty, pretty nice sized space. It's certainly not six feet, though, based on, you know, seat to seat. I can't tell you what the exact dimensions are, but I, but I thought based on that and based on the CDC and public health recommendations, that the distancing thing wasn't something that I was going to recommend this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Herring to McKinney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of comments is that I, if there is going to be a a mandatory attendance at this point, I would not be supporting that. And then the second thing is, is that the spacing, I know that Public Health Director said that there would be no, I think that that might have been the president, that the seating would be according to prior to COVID and there would be no spacing. And so that has has me somewhat concerned as well. But definitely if there was a vote for a mandatory in person at this time, I would not be supporting that.
Thank you, Alder. It appears that we're moving into discussion, Alder Bennett.
That's what I was just about to ask. Are we in discussion or questions right now?
I think it's a little fluid on this item, Alder.
Okay, well, I have a discussion, so whenever that's.
Go ahead, Alder.
Okay, so on the points mentioned, we spoke about this. Most of the questions in depth at our C C E C meeting, and I understand if you all weren't privy to that. But if you weren't able to make it, I definitely recommend watching the recordings because it might help lend insight to our discussions. As to mandatory attendance, I am also against that. And I can speak to this from what currently going through right now. Earlier today, my dad was in the, or he still is in the emergency room. And they kicked me out like around eight o'clock because visitor hours were done. But had there been a mandatory attendance, it would have been very difficult to be there to support my dad. And while my situation might not be reflected in others, there are still issues of, you know, what if you can't find childcare for that evening? What if you have extreme anxiety and can't come in person? Or, um, alders have different variations for what may or may not constitute them to want to come in person. And that's why having this mandatory precedent, I think, polices alder to an, alders to an extent that isn't necessary. We all know and want to strive to, I, I mean, I believe we all want to strive to be in person, and that's why I think it should just be strongly encouraged to make it in person, but let city staff know ahead of time if you'd like to make it online or online. And that is the beauty of having hybrid meetings. And as for distant social, six feet social distancing, are what the recommendation was from CDC is, CDC guidelines is what we've kind of taken on. Personally, I'd be open if you wanted to discuss more like six feet distancing more. But I think I I've seen in library board, which has been meeting in person since the beginning of this year. In other governmental bodies like ASM Senate Council, they've been intending a person. Some people, mo- most people wear masks in those meetings and I've seen it worked out fine. So personally, I think it's okay for us to be in person, sitting at our desks. And definitely strongly encouraging wearing masks for anybody in attendance. So that's where I'm I'm kind of standing.
Thank you, Alder. President Furman.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to offer a few, a few other pieces of information that have just come to me via email that I just think that it's worth the body knowing. That the, I I have details about the ventilation system in C C B 201. There, there is a UV air sterilizer that was installed on all the air handler units throughout the city county building, including the unit that serves 201. So there is filtering of air in that room. And then from from details on the actual hybrid meeting. So the details I gave you earlier was Dane County's first in-person meeting. And they, they did not do physical separation between the supervisors in 201. Some were wearing masks, some weren't. And then, you know, very specifically, I do think it's important for people, and we're talking about the recommendations. Please take a look at them. They're available on the Public Health Madison Dane County website. They're available in the presentation that was given at at C C E C. And if anybody still needs it, I'm happy to send it to you. But there are very specific recommendations, including if you're, you know, not feeling well, not coming in. If you're having any symptoms of COVID vaccinations, et cetera. And so, you know, just wanted to share that if there are other proposals or other motions, I'll certainly, I have some, some thoughts about that based on discussions. But I'll leave it, that information shared for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Abbas.
Yeah, thank you so much. Just want to make it really clear for my colleague. When I will say it's important for us to be in person, perhaps we should look into, you know, some sort of compulsory be in person. That does not mean I want to do policing on orders, then it's not my desire. It's a 20 people of us to decide how we want to move forward. I'm just thinking through, as a former council president and the stressful year we had, I honestly believe there is a really high benefit to be in person. If, and I totally get it hybrid about, you know, very respectfully agree with Alder Bennett about family situation again. Daycare and that I am also have two kids as well. But from team building standpoint, our council is very dysfunctional. It's not a, you know, it's not a hidden knowledge, very factual things. And I do have a concern, probably in some meetings might be, Madam Mayor, you end up 2 A M. in the chamber with two orders. So I don't want to see that happening either. Might be some of you will think, why not me can sit there? But we as a collectively team, we need to decide how we want to move forward, especially. I've been in in-person meeting when I joined the council, I knew it that these are the council requirements. Of course, COVID came, we're looking into great innovation, especially innovation, providing opportunity to party spend to be in a hybrid is amazing. That removes a lot of barriers, so technology barrier, somebody cannot do hybrid, they can still come in person. So from artist's spend standpoint, it's excellent. For our standpoint, I'm, I really think so it will be deeply beneficial if we meet at least once, if not twice a month, some sort of alternative and give an effort to come together and and have those before meeting discussion, after meeting discussion and and develop those relationships. Those will be really key for our council and absolutely my intent is not to policing. That's why I'm not going to propose any amendment at this time. I want to hear from my fellow colleagues how they feel. If majority of them really feel strong, they don't want to come in person or hybrid way. Just living flexible, then so be it. I just want to share my, my thoughts with you all. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter. Although you're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification that I wasn't really looking at the six feet, but I do recall us having a meeting where we were every other desk in the chamber. And I do think that is doable. It was doable that night, and I think that is doable. But I also want to emphasize that some of the colleagues, whether they mention it tonight or not, have underlying medical issues. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration and not just if you're feeling sick or if you've had COVID symptoms. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Let me just clarify on the the question of spacing. And certainly Director Edgerton can speak to this possibly better than I. And with the new system in chambers, they preset the microphones to the council format. And they also, I think, preset the camera positions to the council format. So while it is technically possible to have you not sitting in your correct seats, it becomes much more difficult for staff who are broadcasting the meeting and to identify who's speaking. And it becomes slightly more difficult for me to see who is requesting to speak in the chambers. And I, you know, I think if there is a very strong feeling that you all wanted to not be at your, your desks as arranged, we could figure something out. But there has been, I think, fairly clear feedback from staff that the, their strong preferences for us to to sit in our normal places. I just wanted to share that because I don't think that it had been shared previously.
Thank you for that clarification, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Alder Tischler.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've been identified as a central employee in my day job. Since March 2020, I've, I've split my time both physically on location as well as as working remote. And I fully support, you know, the the fact that we're, we're going to be moving to hybrid. I think it, I think there are definite benefits of people in being in person. But I also want to to say that, that, you know, that that there are also, you know, equally benefits of of keeping a hybrid environment. It does open up the opportunity for people to serve who might otherwise find it difficult to always be coming in in person. Also, I think it's a question of, maybe a question of equity. And when we, those individuals who do choose either, either all the time or once in a while to remain remote, I think we should, you know, not question or make judgments about their decisions. I think that that's, and we should respect their, their decision to attend. And then, and again, attending whether or not physically in person or attending remote should be treated the same. There should be no, no, no distinction in my mind. So I guess I ask if, if, will the record show how somebody attended if they're physically in presence? Or will they be, you know, identified as those who are physically at downtown or those who are attending remote?
President Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. There was suggested that we include in the minutes and just let people know if somebody was in person or virtual. Alder Tischler did bring up the fact of treating people the same. I I agree with that. But I do want to say that the caveat and the likely thinking is if we continue to have quorum and there, there's a technology outage and an alder is not able to attend or not able to continue to participate virtually, we're likely not going to just cancel the meeting and and go home. So there, there is certainly something there that I think at least people should have a heads up. I can't, I'm shocked that we're two years in and have not had more technology outages and issues. But when it comes to in-person meetings, if somebody all of a sudden loses their internet at home and can't figure out how to get in, I think people just need to understand that, you know, we will do our best to try to wait, but we're likely going to move on with the meeting.
Thank you. Alder Fair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I guess I I have a lot of thoughts swirling around. I'm certainly heavily in favor, and I said this at C C E C of, you know, us coming back, and I'm glad that we are. It's glad to see that we're working through this. You know, one of the things that concerns me, I guess, I don't know, concerns the word, but I think we, we need to be in step with the public. And, you know, everywhere we go now, basically in the country, the, we follow the CDC guidelines, which are essentially, you know, recommendations to wear masks if you are immunocompromised or if you just have, are in a close contact or if it's your, if it's your preference to do so for your safety. So a- and there's really no recommendations, I, I believe, about distancing or anything like that. So I think this proposal by Alder Furman makes sense. It essentially follows CDC. It puts us in step with essentially the rest of the world, or at least the rest of the country and certainly the rest of the state. And so I think that's, that's prudent. I, I don't think we should. While I would love to see everyone there who is comfortable and as many people there as possible, because for a lot of the reasons people already said. I think mandating is just would be tough to to enforce. That has also been said too. And I guess I also, I I have a little like old school in me, someone mentioned this, but you know, I, I signed up to be an alder or I ran to be an alder knowing that, you know, I'm going to have to sacrifice this time away from my house. But in doing so, I got to know, I don't know, 40, 60, 80 people, whatever it was at the end of eight years in a way that wasn't just as an alder. It was also as a human being and as a, you know, as a person and living in the city and made some real connections that I still have today. And, you know, I think that's important and I think that could help the discussions that we have and the working relationships that we have. And so I would just really, you know, certainly encourage us to come back in this hybrid setting, but also encourage people to to attend if they at all think it's it's safe for them. So, so, you know, I I look forward to seeing all of us in the same room and hopefully this goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Benford.
Thanks, Mayor. I really appreciate the conversation and hearing the dialogue. And I can't escape the bias that during the meeting, my daughter texts, texted me from the Twin Cities saying that she's positive. And then last week, two of my sons. So I I'm sure we all have those stories, right? That for these last couple of years, how this disease has just wrecked havoc on our lives. So I wanted to say that I really appreciate the move toward hybrid. And not to be flippant or dumb, Mayor, but, you know, the thought of hanging out with you to 2:00 in the morning, me and my dog, where we would do that from time to time. But ultimately, Alder Tischler said something that really resonated with me, the sense of equity. Now, I I'm a social worker and I want to respectfully say that I don't think we're dysfunctional. We bring 20 different people in a room, no matter what the context is, you're always going to have a little bit of friction. I'm really proud to serve with you all. You know, is it better to read body language? Is it better to look in the eye? Is it better to really make those connections? Of course it is. Go have a cup of coffee, meet outside. We can build these relationships in other ways, but the sense of equity down the road in the future that if we want non-traditional people, back in the day when I was an alder, single dad with four kids at the time, I sure wish there was this hybrid situation going on. And really, it comes down to individually, what do we feel in our heart is our best service? Can we do that virtually? And I believe the last couple of years, I think we can all take pride in, not only us, but I T staff and everyone else involved in setting these things up. So I I want us to be really careful. And and when I say this, please, Mayor, don't get mad. But, you know, last meeting, I heard you say probably twice that it would be better if we're all together and then you tested positive. And I think I don't want to be the person to be the source of super spreading. And I appreciate Director Heinrich on the call and mask and CDC protocols and things. But we're not out of the woods yet, folks. And if this is the way that individually we feel we can best serve through the hybrid model, I think that we should embrace this and actually be dang proud that we're still able to do the city's business. Now for the notion of mandating, I think that's absolutely ridiculous that, once again, it's up to us. We're, we were elected. We're all adults on this call. Now, if we sincerely believe that spending, you know, every other Tuesday together is going to build these kumbaya moments, we're all going to be besties for the rest of our lives. I think we're fooling ourselves that there's other ways to build those intentional connections with our colleagues. So I would encourage us to spend more energy thinking about that rather than put lives at risk. Or until we're, will we ever get to zero? I don't know. And this is going to be. I don't know. And this is going to be with us for a long time. But let's not be cavalier. We can find those ways to form those connections. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. So the motion, which President Furman also emailed to everyone, is to confirm the meeting formats through September. So from July until September as hybrid with the following conditions, to follow the Public Health, Madison-Dane County and CDC recommendations. At this point in time, that would mean that masks would be highly recommended, to have alders seated in their normal seats, to remove some seats from the public gallery and to have one overflow room for the public. That's the motion. Everybody clear on the motion? Yes. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the motion? Seeing no objection, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of that motion on item 16. And that will take us to item 56. Give me a moment. All right, item 56 is Legis star 71833, authorizing the park superintendent to enter into boat launch use agreements with construction companies to use designated boat launches for private purposes. President Furman.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Are there any questions? Or is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to record? Oh, Alder Vediver.
Sorry, we did receive a letter today, I think, from one of the companies that does a lot of the barge work. And I'm just wondering if staff could address the points that were brought forward in that letter and whether there might be, whether those are really addressed in the current draft or not.
Thank you, Alder. We have Superintendent Knapp here, I believe.
That's correct.
Can you?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
We can, yes.
Yes, I can. I don't have the letter in front of me, but we have been working with the company, the gentleman who wrote the letter and I thought would speak tonight even with one of the many local private businesses who every year has used the ramps. I will point out to the public and the alders, use those ramps for commercial for-profit businesses without the appropriate permits that they probably should have. We are working with all of those. We're willing to work with anybody. There's nobody specifically that is the big problem. Our concern is without any regulatory environment at all, the recreational users of the ramps or their use is impaired. What we're asking for tonight is the ability to enter into negotiated agreements with individual companies for this year so that they can have legal access and we can figure it out and come back with an ordinance amendment in the future. I think a number of the concerns raised by D L Anderson are relevant. I think some are not very relevant. We will, as staff, do our level best to set an equitable playing field on the fee level. And I think we're pretty close to that. But I want everyone to understand the example that was placed out. There is an example of template language from our attorney's office on an existing agreement. There are negotiable terms there, like sites and locations that could accommodate weather. But we do think it's reasonable for the city to be notified when a private business wants to use a public facility for a private purpose. I hope I addressed most of them, but you'll see more of this over the coming years. For those who, you remember last fall, this is a very small intermediate step towards addressing the issues that also led to boat in-water emergency removal last fall. These issues will continue to come up. We are working through a comprehensive review. This is a micro step to give us some tools for this year.
Thank you, Superintendent Knapp. Any further questions? If not, it's been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, that item is adopted. That will take us to item 83. Item 83 is an introduction of new business. 72006 amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances to add positions of various positions in Compensation Group 21. On item 83, President Furman, a motion?
Move an introduction with referrals to the Finance Committee on 7/11, Transportation Policy and Planning Board on 7/18, and Common Council on 7/19.
Second.
Moved and seconded to introduce and refer. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is introduced and referred. On item 106, which is Legislative File 72125, amending the Water Utility Capital Budget, President Furman, a motion?
Move introduction with referrals to the Finance Committee on 7/11, the Water Utility Board on 6/28, and the Common Council on 7/19.
Second.
Moved and seconded to introduce and refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is introduced and referred. President Furman, introductions from the floor.
Move introduction of Legislative File Number 72139, amending the 2022 adopted operating budget for traffic engineering to accommodate increased costs for signage material and training. Refer to Finance Committee on 6/27/2022, Transportation Commission on 6/20, 6/2022.
7/13.
So I guess the question is, I'm going to propose the introduction. If Alder McKinney would like to move an alternative substitute, she can. And we can discuss that. So Transportation Commission on 6/22 and the Common Council on 7/12.
Second.
All right, so the motion is to introduce and refer as stated. Is there discussion? Alder Hengs McKinney.
Yes, there is discussion. The, as introduced, it puts it before the Transportation Commission at tomorrow's meeting. And my recommendation was to have the opportunity for that commission to thoroughly review it. And then that my recommendation was to have it for the July meeting. And so is that a substitute? Please help me, Madam Mayor.
That would be a substitute motion, Alder.
Okay, and it is a substitute. And I put forth a substitute, that having this before the Transportation Commission tomorrow, at tomorrow's meeting, and then to keep on track, it would be better for the commission to have the opportunity to review this. And I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, but it'd give the opportunity to review this and to have it to be on the following Transportation Commission meeting rather than tomorrow's meeting.
All right, so I understand that Alder Hengs McKinney is making a substitute motion to introduce, to refer to Finance on 6/27, Transportation on 7/13, and the Council on 7/19. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Alder Carter will second. Thank you. So that's the motion that's before us now. Is there further discussion? Alder Foster.
I guess one was if somebody maybe from staff could confirm that it is currently on the Transportation Commission agenda for tomorrow.
Let's see, we have our engineer Tao here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alder Foster, for a question. Yes, it is Transportation Commission agenda. Actually, it was due to a staff glitch that this was not on the regular agenda. So we had to do, we found that today, so I had to do an introduction from the floor. But we had been discussing this with the TC leadership for some time now. They are actually planning to include this on their council agenda for tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And just one other clarification, the lead committee for this would be, would still be Finance, correct, in either case?
I think that's correct, Alder.
Should I save a comment or?
Yeah, we've got at least one other alder, so I'll come back to you. Alder Abbas.
Yeah, a quick question for Tao Yang. Cool. So I'm just looking at the agenda item on Transportation 6/22. You just mentioned you guys did some amend them. I did not follow it. I don't see it on the agenda item published as it is, if I click right now.
Sorry, Alder Abbas, could you clarify your question?
I'm just looking at the, yeah, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
The alder doesn't see it on tomorrow's Transportation Commission agenda. Can we just confirm again that it's there?
I'm pretty sure it's on there, but let me just double check. Because, yeah, yeah, we checked a couple of times.
Maybe I'm looking at a different file. It's Legislative File Number 72006?
No, Alder, it's 72139.
Okay, yeah, I can see it. Sorry, I was looking at a different file.
All right, so it is, it is in fact on tomorrow's agenda.
Yeah, it is on. Yeah, I just opened it up. It's on there. And it also noted as a council agenda.
Alder Hengs McKinney? You're muted, Alder.
I have a question from staff. When was this added to the Transportation Commission agenda? You said something about a glitch and I wasn't following you. Could you tell me when this was added to the agenda of the Transportation Commission?
Yeah, thank you, Alder Hengs McKinney. Yeah, of course, yeah. So we have been working on this resolution, you know, for about three weeks now. And so I've been keeping, you know, the Transportation Commission leadership informed, especially during the agenda setting meetings, you know, making sure that, you know, we carried with other items that's going to come up, coming to TC. So the leadership has been aware of this for a few weeks now, but it was officially, you know, determined that it will be on the agenda as of last week. And the agenda was published, the TC agenda was published Friday afternoon last week with this item on there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just like to clarify the glitch that was referenced. Unfortunately, the Clerk's Office did not include it on the agenda that was released last week for the council as an introduction item. But the TC agenda that was, as I said, the TC agenda that was distributed did have this as an item. The original, there was an amended TC agenda or anything like that. But all along, the TC agenda did assume that this would be introduced today and in front of Transportation Commission tomorrow.
Thank you. Alder Abbas.
Yeah, a quick process-related question. Probably I'm too tired right now to remember Attorney Haas. So Attorney Haas, oh yeah, you're here. So we can legally put on other city committees and commission agenda item beside council to get any decision. Beside council, put it on agenda item because agenda item, we're just introducing now on common council agenda item, but it's already a Transportation Commission. Is it, we can do it legally?
If I, if I understand your question, Alder, I think the answer is yes. We've had instances where B C C has acted and made a recommendation to council before the item has actually been introduced at the council level. And the council can act, you know, without a referral, it can act with any input from the B C C, from a B C C at any time. So I'm not exactly sure if that's a question you're asking.
You answered it. You answered it. That was my question. No, that makes sense. Okay, that's good to know. Thanks.
Thank you. Alder Hengs McKinney.
Thank you very much. My question is back to Attorney Haas. And we talk about process so often. And I'm a bit confused because of what I heard. The president says that there was a glitch, that it was not on the council agenda. And please correct me if I am misstating you. I'm asking to be corrected. But now it's on the agenda for tonight. And then it'll also be on the agenda for the TC meeting tomorrow. Where was the glitch and what is the sense of urgency of getting this on the TC agenda for tomorrow night to bring it back to the Finance Committee and ultimately back to the, to the council? And so if that's a question for Attorney Haas or if that's a question for Yang, please help me to understand what that sense of urgency is. Secondly, what would that delay cause?
Alder Hengs McKinney, let me try and articulate the process issues here. And the, the process, what normally happens is items for introduction come to the Clerk's Office, they're placed on a council agenda, which is then reviewed by council leadership and a surprisingly large number of staff. And then the council agenda is released to the public. And normally what would have happened is that on that council agenda that was released for today's meeting, you would have, this item would have been on for introduction with a referral to tomorrow's Transportation Commission and then Finance, and then back to the council. So the only thing that's different from our normal process is that this was overlooked in the creation of the printed agenda. And so it needs to be introduced from the floor. That's the only thing that's different. There's nothing is out of order. And there's, you know, we're actually completely on track for how this item was supposed to proceed. The only thing that was missed is it getting printed on the actual agenda. And so again, instead, it's an introduction from the floor. I can't speak to the urgency of the item. I imagine that Yang certainly can. But given that the cost overruns that they're seeing, I think they would probably like to have the flexibility to buy these supplies as quickly as possible. And I know that certainly with, given their staffing issues, the training, I think, is important to get underway as well. But honestly, this item has probably now received more scrutiny than it deserves given the fact that we're actually completely on track for where we were supposed to be. Alder Foster.
Seeing other hands, I'm going to give a comment if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be voting no against this. I think the way that it was on the consent agenda makes sense. I don't think we should take more time with it. It's on the agenda already for TC. It'll be, get all the review it needs to. The biggest objection to changing it for me is that I absolutely want Finance Committee to have the benefit of a recommendation from TC as being the lead committee. And if we did as proposed right now, it would flip that. We would get a recommendation from Finance being the lead. That would be the recommendation that we have in front of us and reviewed by Transportation Commission would come after that. So it's really not the way that we normally. So it's, it's really not the way that we normally do things. It really is a bit out of order. It's something we have done in the past. I don't see any benefit to doing that, so I'll, I'll be voting no against the proposed change.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harington McKinney?
Okay, I'll speak finally to, uh, this is my last speaking. Um, um, I take exception to the comment that this is receiving more discussion than is warranted. I take exception to that. And the reason that I take exception to that is that I'm finding that we talk about the process when it works for us. This is out of order, whether, um, uh, my substitute to have this referred to the next, um, T C meeting, um, is passed or not. I understand in reading the verbiage, um, why this was put forward. Um, but again, I take exception to, um, us, um, talking about a process and using and holding to that standard when it's convenient and not, um, holding to that standard when it doesn't suit us. And so I will withdraw, um, uh, my, um, um, my substitute, uh, but I will not be supporting this item.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any objection to reverting back to the main motion? Seeing no objection, we're back to the main motion, uh, which is to introduce, refer to Finance six twenty-seven, Transportation six twenty-two, and Common Council seven twelve. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, um, with the exception of recording Alder Harington McKinney as a no vote. Is there objection to recording I votes? Seeing no other objection, we'll court Alder Harington McKinney as a no vote, and the balance, uh, as eyes. President Furman, still introductions from the floor.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, introduction of Legislative File seven, two, two, four, five, authorizing the expenditure for conceptual architectural and engineering design services for the State Street Campus Garage redevelopment project, second Aldermatic District, referring this to the Lead Committee of Finance on seven eleven, uh, Transportation Commission on seven thirteen, and, um, uh, Common Council on seven nineteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded to introduce and refer. Is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is introduced and referred. I believe that is it. And so Alder Conklin, it's your turn.
I, I'd like to make a, um, a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, thank you all. We are stand adjourned. Have a good night.
Night.